President.
Mr. Perry.
Yeah.
Mr. Rado. Mr. Thornton.
Here.
Mr. Urban.
Here.
Mr. Willoughby.
Here.
My question.
All right, thank you. We have no recognitions or ceremonial proclamations today. Do we have any additions or deletions from the voting session agenda? Very none, I'd ask for a motion to pass the voting session agenda.
Motion Venus.
Second, Thornton.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, agenda passes. Attorney scheme would like to just comment quickly on the executive session that we had prior to this meeting.
Thank you, Chairman. On Tuesday, April nineteenth at 5:04 PM until 7:00 PM, we had an executive session that concerned employment matters and union contracts. On Tuesday, April twentieth, from 5:02 to 6:05, we had an executive session to discuss children and youth investigation and update the council. And today, April twenty-fourth, at 5:00 AM, 5:00 PM until 5:40 PM, we had an executive session to discuss litigation.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Scheme. Public comment on agenda items. I have two slips up here. First is Mark Rebo.
Good evening, members of council, ladies and gentlemen. With regards to voting session item number four, pertaining to the American Rescue Plan Act, money, half a million going to Hazleton City Land Bank, as I said at the previous county meeting. Based on the property that was transferred last year around the budget time, the South Church Street property that was in question, I find it very difficult to support any kind of money going to a land bank that was recently formed and was not formed properly, nor in accordance with the ordinance that was passed by City, Hazleton City Council, nor the land bank statute of Pennsylvania. Also, with respect to the properties that were identified, there's no budget, projected budget by the land bank that was given, nor the means of identifying how they were being condemned, or, you know, what the problems were on the property. Because when you go through the blighted property process, whether it's the blight property process or the land bank, you still have to show how it is you came to the conclusion that those properties are blighted and that there was due process given to those people before the land bank, before it went to the repository, or, you know, so the land bank would purchase it. Also, the property on South Church Street, there was monies utilized through CDBG, the city CDBG money, for demolishing the property after the fire took place. That should have been stated to this council, the previous council last year. So, I mean, with all the things that were left not said to you and to the manager and also the administration, I think that should disqualify Hazleton City, at least for now, from receiving any monies until they get the, everything situated and they get a budget and they make their determination on how they came to their conclusion of those properties that they want to remediate or demolish. But I think that it shouldn't behoove on the rest of the county to, you know, just give the money, you know, sight unseen and say, well, you know, they made a blunder and everybody makes mistakes and this and that, but, you know, something like that is not just a little blunder, a little mistake. That is, there's multiple things that happen that are just totally ignored and should have been picked up by the solicitor's office of Hazleton City. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rebo. Mr. Dombrowski?
I think I'm not in general, I made a mistake.
Okay, that's okay, no problem. We also have two emails that were submitted to council that I'll read real quick before anybody else comes up. The first one is from Robert Stevens, and it says, "Members of council, please read at the upcoming meeting. I'm writing in regard to the vote to replace the recently vacated seat on county council as a result of the election of Robert Schnee. I would like to offer my opinion as a citizen of the county, the greater Hazleton area, and a constituent. First and of most significant concern is the issue of his replacement by a member of the Democratic Party or Republican Party. I served previously as the first district Democratic Chair. Mr. Schnee was a registered Democrat and a Democrat committee member. In his campaign for county council, he ran as a registered Democrat as well as a write-in on the Republican line. That said, he was supported in that campaign by the Democratic Party. That included party money, infrastructure, committee, and volunteer assistance, as well as poll workers. He was endorsed by the party and appeared on the Democratic Party tickets as used at the polls on election day. In short, he was elected as a Democrat despite the Republican write-in and assumed office as a Democrat. Voters had an expectation that he would serve as a Democrat. His subsequent decision to switch party allegiance was a personal choice and irrelevant to the issue at hand. The seat is clearly and by all logic a Democrat seat and should remain so until the end of the term. If voters who make the choice of representation choose at that time to elect a Republican, then so be it. But it's the voter's choice, not a Republican majority on council who would essentially be overturning the will of the voters when Mr. Schnee was elected. I would also strongly recommend that the choice of his replacement be selected from within the first district from which he was elected. This would also reflect the will of the voters. I know Mr. Schnee while I congratulate him on his victory as a member of the state legislature. That said, the logical, fair, and I believe legal path is to fill his seat with a registered Democrat. Perhaps in order for council to avoid the appearance of party bias, they might consider allowing the courts to make a determination based on their understanding of the law and interpretation of the county charter on this matter. I appreciate the opportunity to express my views on this matter. In final analysis, this appointment will not change the balance of power on council, as there is an overwhelming Republican majority. Doing the right thing will show that council is interested in maintaining the essence of the democratic process. Respectfully, Bob Stevens, Hazleton, VA." Okay. Mr. Griffin, we have this for you. Is this, you're gonna read this later? To opioid?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Anybody else for public comment on agenda items? Okay. Jess Morgan first, and then Mr. Newman.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to speak. I raised my hand and didn't mean to. Sorry about that.
Okay, no problem, Ms. Morgan. Mr. Newman?
Hello?
John Newman from Nanticoke, Pennsylvania.
Yeah, wait a minute.
I wasn't going to speak, but after reading that email, it's very nice that Mr. Stevens interpreted the county charter. Very nice that he did. Unfortunately, he doesn't have the authority to interpret the county charter. And the founders of our Home Rule Charter knew what they wanted. And they clearly said it in the charter, and that's what should be followed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Anybody else for public comment on agenda items? Ms. Blazinski?
Good afternoon, council members, and, Mr. Newman, respectfully respect your opinion. I wouldn't be in agreement with Mr. Stevens' communication. As you know, currently the chair of Luzerne County Democratic Party. I was the vice chair at the point at which Mr. Stevens was elected, and as, rather, Mr. Schnee, and as Mr. Stevens pointed out, he was supported fully by the Democratic Party, our volunteers. Financially, I personally picked up the slate cards containing his name, which he used and others used during the 2019 election. It's clear, he was elected as a Democrat in Democratic primary. He ran as a Democrat even though he did get Republican write-in support, absolutely. And he served, to a quick count, about twenty-seven or twenty-eight months in office, nineteen of which were as a registered Democrat until he changed. And again, we congratulate him on his win to the legislature. But echoing what Mr. Stevens said, I think I humbly ask all the members of council to look at this as supporting the will of the people. This is not a time for partisanship. This is a time to show the folks that elected all of you that indeed you don't just represent the Luzerne County residents who belong or follow one party. You support the will of all the residents of Luzerne County. And with that in mind, I also strongly suggest that you consider filling the seat with a Democrat, as it was the intention of the voting public, to elect a Democrat from the Hazleton area, and that gentleman served as a Democrat for the larger part of his term. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Ms. Blazinski, what town are you from? We apologize. We didn't.
Oh, sorry, Haverhill Town.
Okay. Anybody else for public comment on agenda items? Anybody else on the Zoom for public? All right. Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the April twelfth, 2022 voting session.
Second, Thornton.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Give me old business. Hearing none, we'll move into county manager agenda items. First is a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds to enter into a contract with Booth Management Consulting LLC.
Good evening, council. This evening we have members of the Booth Group and Danielle Cunningham, if there are any questions.
We need a first and a second first.
Motion, Tim McGinley?
Second. Okay. All right, go ahead. Ms. Corcoran, go ahead.
If council has any questions, we do have members of Booth and Danielle Cunningham to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Liscavich?
No.
Mr. McDermott?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
No, I should have added on the question, though, that, although I think it's a good exercise to have something like this, I wanted to wait till we got a new county manager before, well, it's 254,000 quarter of a million, so I'm voting no tonight.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Lovett?
No.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes. Okay.
And Mr. Venus?
No.
Saying they best relax, right?
All right, the motion fails. Number two, motion to adopt the resolution designating an agent to execute all required forms and documents for the purpose of obtaining financial assistance under the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act.
Second, Thornton.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Liscavich?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yeah.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Motion to adopt the resolution authorizing a contract with PFM Group Consulting for the preparation of a ten-year financial plan. It's an emotion.
So.
There a second?
Second, Tim McGinley.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Again, great idea, having an outside organization take a look, and they've been doing this in the past, I understand, the same group, to strategize and form a strategic plan for a county. This is a ten-year financial plan. I believe the fee is $168,000, if I'm not mistaken. And again, we just went through an extensive hiring process of a county manager, and the person that we've hired and selected has a master's degree in strategic planning. I just feel we're better, the county's better well-served than not spending that $168,000 at this moment and wait two months or three months until the new Mr. Robertson is here to give his direction of which, you know, where the county should be headed. If he feels we should hire this group here, I'd be all for it. But that's just my comments.
Anybody else on the question? Roll call, please.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
No.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Willoughby?
No.
Mr. Venus?
No.
Mr. Liscavich?
No.
Mr. Lombardo?
No.
Yes, seven, no.
All right. Motion regarding the resolution authorizing the use of American Rescue Plan Acts funds by the Hazleton Land Bank. The first motion will be to remove from the table.
So.
Second, pair. Roll call, please.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Willoughby?
No.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Liscavich?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes. All right. And now motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds for the Hazleton City Land Bank.
So move, Thornton. Second, pair. Question?
Mr. Vice Chairman, initially, we do have reservations about this. We voiced them over the past month, and tonight, we did hear from our, or this afternoon, we heard from our solicitor, Mr. Harry Skeen, who assured us that he received those documents that I was seeking from the Hazleton City Land Bank. Specifically, he received copies of the minutes of their meetings, received copies that they were duly advertised in public publications. And although they had some growing pains initially, as any startup group might have, I'm confident, my biggest concern all along was that when the federal auditors and state auditors come in here four or five years from now, and they audit all of our ARP monies, which they will, and they said that repeatedly and wrote it repeatedly, they're gonna audit every penny we give away, and I was concerned that if we ever gave money away to questionable organization, that we may be required as a county to pay that money back. But having spoken with Attorney Skeen tonight, he assured me that he is confident that they comply with the ordinances that are in place, so I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. If I could just add one thing as well. I think, Mr. Thornton, what you said was pretty, a pretty apt observation. Growing pains is more of what the problem was with the Hazleton Land Bank than anything necessarily malicious. And, you know, this is something that I ran on, and a lot of other people ran on in this room, is removing blight from the area, and that's what they're doing, and I'm even more comfortable in my vote after hearing Attorney Skeen's opinion. So I'm happy to vote for this.
Other question?
Go ahead.
I did reach out to members of the Hazleton community. I asked for more financials, more background information, some more financials, speaking to their project, their programs, how they looked to spend $500,000, and I received no answer. That's just where I stand.
Mr. Urban, tipper. Looking at the inception of this land bank and the way it was formed, it was not formed, in my opinion, in compliance with the actual land bank statute, you know, impacted here and enacted in Pennsylvania. Initially, they had three members of the board. They did not duly advertise their first meeting. Obviously, it's, you know, considered a sunshine violation, but nobody brought it forward within the thirty days, you know, flying underneath the radar. Who would have known the pilot's plane because they held a meeting in secret? The land bank statute also says land bank has a board of directors between five and eleven members, so they actually took action prior to the true consummation of that, my land bank. It's also my belief, I think, that Hazleton received $18 million of their own ARP money. So they could take simply $500,000 of their own ARP money, be audited in their own house versus us giving them another 500K from the county funds. I think we should hold off and let them use their money first, if they need more, they can come back to us later. Just because they didn't start it correctly. And I think within the ordinance, if I'm not mistaken, when a city or municipality creates the ordinance, they have to name those members at that specific time, which was not done correctly, in my opinion, in the inception of the ordinance. I also would take issue, unfortunately, Mr. Perry, your brother is also the city council president. I would hope you recuse yourself from this vote. Even, you know, because of the close relationship that you obviously have between the county and the city, and that's all I have to say.
Vice Chair, I thank you, Thornton, for your thoughts, everything that you said I agree with. And I agree with our county solicitor, his interpretation and everything. I'm not gonna reschedule myself. I don't think it has anything to do with ethics at all.
Any other comments?
Mr. Skeen did say that it is a legitimate organization right now. Everything's filed properly with the state. So I feel that it's, it's fine.
Thank you. There's no other comments. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Willoughby?
No.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Liscavich?
No.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes. Thank you. What was that?
It passed.
It passed. All right. Motion to adopt the resolution approving the settlement of pending litigation in the matter of Shelby Wachella versus Luzerne County and Walter Griffith.
So move.
Second, Venus.
Roll call, please.
Before the roll call, Mr. Lombardo. I'd like to make a comment. As you can see by the resolution there, that the county has a small part of the potential settlement, and the other major part is an individual decided on his own to make some comments and share it on his Facebook page. I don't believe the county should be supporting that. I don't believe the county should be paying for that. That was done by an individual, and I think at this point, that individual has the accountability for that, and the county should not be supporting those types of things. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, my personal view on the matter is that I'm here to protect the First Amendment, freedom of speech, and absence of any malice, or vicious vitriol of speech. I think we need to uphold the First Amendment and allow freedom of speech. That's all I can say.
Here are no other comments. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Thornton?
We're done reading the motion again. No.
Mr. Urban?
No.
Mr. Willoughby?
No.
Mr. Venus?
No.
Mr. Liscavich?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Lombardo?
No.
All right, council agenda items. Motion to adopt the resolution to disband the manager's search committee.
Second, Thornton.
Question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Liscavich?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
I vote yes, and I would hope that we would send a letter to the members of that committee thanking them for their service. Thank you.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes. Motion to adopt a resolution declaring the elected position of Luzerne County Councilmember Robert Schnee vacant due to his election to the Pennsylvania House of Representatives.
So move, Thornton. Second, below.
Just quickly on the question, Attorney Skeen, would you mind just giving the public a little synopsis of your opinion that you had given about this?
Yes, based upon the charter, the way it's written, I don't think it was taken into consideration the facts that we have here, but the way the charter reads, we have we have to find that there's a person who's qualified under the charter to act. We have to find that the person is the same political party as the person he or she is to succeed, and we have to find that that person who is being appointed has been of the same party of the person who is, he or she is going to succeed. So, given that Mr. Schnee was a Republican when he resigned, we have to find a qualified person who's a Republican and has been a Republican up until the time that he was elected to that position, which I believe was 2019.
Anybody?
And I believe this motion, I'm sorry. I believe the motion is only to vote on vacating the seat.
Yes.
Not appointing anybody.
True. Just, I just wanted to make sure there was some clarification based on the comments that were made.
Right for the public, yeah.
Okay, roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
I'm sorry. Again, I just want to congratulate Mr. Schnee, wish him all the luck and heritage we're gonna always born in today. Well wish.
Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Liscavich?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes. All right. Motion regarding resolution initiating an inquiry into Luzerne County 911 P-25 countywide next generation public safety radio system. The first motion is a motion to remove this from the table.
Second.
Other question? Anybody? All right, roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Liscavich?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Willoughby?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
No.
Seven, yes, two, remove from the table.
All right. The next motion is a motion to adopt the resolution initiating an inquiry into Luzerne County 911 P-25 countywide next generation public safety radio system.
So move.
Second.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Thor.
For the record, I want everybody to know that I'm 1,000% behind safety for our first responders, I'm 1,000% behind our 911 people and the sacrifices they all make, especially our police department, fire department, EMTs. And my only concern with this $27 million price tag is that it's about $7 million over what they initially planned. Now, if it's deemed these state-of-the-art radios are indeed what they say they are, and indeed, that's the fair price of them, including the other equipment that comes with them, I'm absolutely prepared, after an inquiry, to vote for that. I just want to make sure that for $7 million, we're actually getting what they say we're getting, and that a year or two from now, they're not gonna come back with another million, $2 million price tag or $5 million because they need it. So I just wanted to comment on that, and that's how I feel, but I fully support our emergency responders.
Any other comments on the question?
Yes, Mr. Lombardo.
Go ahead.
I would hope it's been noted in several different I would, I would hope it's, it's been noted in several different cases over the past several years, actually, beginning with the first presentation regarding nine one one and changing from the analog to digital. The maintenance agreement, the ongoing maintenance agreement over twenty years would be approximately seven million dollars. During that time, there would be two refreshment places at seven years out and at fourteen years out. The maintenance agreement was to be paid through general fund money. It was not part of the borrowing, it was not part of the project to transfer from the analog to the digital. So you're looking at approximately seven million dollars that will be incorporated into the county general budget to pay for that maintenance agreement for twenty years. I think that's some of the issue in regards, when you look at that total amount of money, twenty-seven million dollars, that seven million dollars has to be thought of as what it is, a maintenance agreement. Thank you.
Anybody else? Attorney scheme, go ahead.
Just because this is the beginning of an investigation, you need a seven vote. It's got to be majority and one, or more.
Thank you, and I just want to quickly comment again, you know, I pretty heavily defended this project at the last meeting. And, you know, we have had opportunities to ask Mr. Rosenkrantz questions about this, and Chairwoman Radel asked us to send her an email with questions about this, and she only got a handful of responses and things that have already either been answered or things that were, in my opinion, very benign. If we don't know what questions we want to ask and we're forming this committee, I don't see the point of even forming the committee. We have the person right there that we can speak to with any of these questions, and I believe, you know, I followed this pretty much from its inception as well, and I think that he's answered them all in a very transparent way. I, I really don't see the need for this. I think it's a serious, serious waste of our time, a serious waste of taxpayer money, and, and it's not necessary. So, I mean, Mr. Rosenkrantz, do you have anything you'd like to say about this quickly? No, and once again, too, we have him listed on the, on the work session agenda as having an opportunity to speak about this. So to, to go forward with this, I think is ridiculous without letting the police have an opportunity to speak.
Just to add on to Mr. McKinley's comments, that he is a hundred percent correct, and there is no decision to be made with this contract. It's already signed and awarded to Motorola for twenty years. So I don't know, you know, where this is going to go or what this is all about, but the contract is in place. That, that ship sailed, that, that contract is signed, so if you want to negate that contract, there could be law infractions, you know, civil implications in the contract if you decide to do anything against the contract that's in place and already approved ten to one by council in twenty nineteen. And again, the total contract amount was for twenty-four million, seven hundred and five thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and six cents with Motorola. There are other pieces of this project that aren't included in that loan bar. So the original loan borrowing was not for the twenty years of support maintenance. That is to be paid over twenty years, years two through twenty, and that amount is seven million, three sixty-three, three hundred and three dollars. That's broken out. I have the schedule right here, and it's part of the contract. I have the book here at the last meeting. No one had any questions. I think we got four questions from the last time, and I got them today. I asked for them last week respectively, so we had time to answer them. But any questions you have, I'm here. I've been transparent from the beginning. We have nothing to hide, and I certainly did not piecemeal this project, as alleged.
And just in reference to the, the ARP funds that were requested from the nine one one center, that additional part of the project was not in the original spec of the project. It is, it is an additional part that's essentially an add-on. It's like putting an addition on your house.
Correct.
And obviously, I think it's a very important one, and I hope that people here that want to speak on that tonight. But that's, I just wanted to make sure we're clarifying that.
Correct, that, that's a separate add-on piece. That was not part of the original contract. That's why it was put in as a change order. But it's sole source specific to Motorola Solutions for the GPS and the program.
Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Mr. Rosenkrantz, I, I had a quick question, and it's regarding, I had conversation with Mr. McDermott regarding the radios in the background.
I did send an email. I did forward that. I don't know if you
Could you just state what that was?
It was the concern about the nearby town is not having the upgrade. And that was something that they said, and, and I know Mr. Lombardo said that there was a, a switch. So they weren't aware of that, which, you know, is a communication problem. The other thing is having to turn in their old radios. And I don't know if that's something that, again, I don't know. I'm just bringing up things, concerns that were, were brought to me. So if you have to turn in their old radios and give them to you, they paid money, they wanted to be able to keep them. Again, a clarification is needed, and also the radios of where they purchased them. So they said they checked with the county. The county said that they could purchase whatever radios they were, and now they're being told that they're not, they're not good, they're not going to be compatible. They were approximately, what, three to four thousand dollars? I believe they're very expensive. So of course, they had that concern, and where are they going to come up with money to replace the, the radios that they purchased, thinking that they were going to be compatible with the upgrade? So again, I sent that email out with those questions. Don't know if you received it, and if you didn't, I
I received it this morning, but a, a lot of that is, it's not accurate information. That's, that's the thing. It's been addressed several times. We have analog gateway set up. Wyoming County is certainly going to be able to communicate with us on this system. And, and I have Motorola representatives, I, John Ankenbrand, who knows the project like the back of his hand with programming. We're well prepared for interoperability with surrounding counties, digital or analog. So that the radios currently
Maybe the communication wasn't, I don't know, maybe the communication wasn't clear then, if they're feeling that they're not getting the answers that they need to, to feel confident and, and, you know, switching over. They did say they also had heard, and again, this is all room, that the state police, some of the state police or all of the state police had a problem with the switch over, that crashed. I don't know if
That's not accurate.
Okay, I don't know if it is or isn't. That, that, again, that was a concern that was brought to me.
Yeah, a, a lot of this was, was visited pre-COVID and, and more recently as well. We do a newsletter every quarter, you know, we, we had meetings with every agency. We've been transparent with them all along the process. They know how many radios they're getting. They know when the switch over is going to happen. We've been fully transparent with them, and, and there are a few questions, you know, that they have and concerns, but
Did they receive in writing what radios were going to be compatible, or what vendors to buy them from?
Yes.
Was that given in
They were given, so, so previous administrations, in the beginning of this project, it was decided that we are going to only allow equipment on the system that is certified by the state. We don't have the staff certified, you know, you could imagine how many different brands of radios there are out there, trying to manage four thousand units. That's why the county, through this project, purchased over eight million dollars in Motorola mobile and portable equipment. The state releases every six months, I believe, the, the statewide radio network division, SRND. They are managing the P twenty-five radio project for the state, for the state police. And they release a list, and they vet all the products that maybe EF Johnson, Kenwood, whatever vendor it may be, they do the testing and make sure it's compatible and works on the trunked P twenty-five radio system that we have as well. So, so rather than reinventing the wheel, having our own QA QC process with the county, we've adopted and go along with the state and partnered with them as far as doing the testing and what works and what doesn't work on the system.
I believe that, that I do have a list from the state saying what's approved, and I can't say one hundred percent that they have the Kenwood Viking. But it does show that that's, and I would have to find out exactly what their radio is, but
Sure.
I believe that's what they have, and it does say that it is compatible.
Yep.
So again, you know, I'm just the middle man here. We need to be able to settle this, you know, between you and, and this was the Back Mountain EMS, Fire EMS.
Back Mountain Regional?
Yes, so they had brought up
Personally, and I've spoken to him about this project, so that's why I'm so confused. I know they purchased a lot of radios years ago that weren't compatible before this project even came to fruition, and they have a whole closet full of radios, you know. I didn't tell them to go out and buy those radios, you know, and, and that's, that's why council at, at the time felt it's so incumbent and important to purchase mobile and portable radios for these agencies to take the sting away, because they are three to four thousand dollars. But we also negotiated in
Told them which radios to buy.
That's an
They said they asked. So that's why I asked, did you have it, and was it something that was sent out in writing, saying that here?
Yes. It's on our website, yes.
Some agencies did purchase the Viking series radios, and while we attempted to program them, they did not have all the features that were required for our system. So the vendor did not provide them a radio that was complete, that would work in our system. They would need to get them upgraded. Now, I've not looked at Back Mountain Regional radios yet, but two separate agencies that I have attempted to program did not have the full components of the P twenty-five in it. So I was not able to program them based on what they thought and were
So you're, what you have according to what the state has out there as approved radios, that you, you may require something more to be added to it?
The list that's, we, we provided the list of requirements that are needed to connect to our system. There are certain requirements. You need to have a P twenty-five trunk. You need to have a ninety-six hundred block. You need to have legacy key. So there are certain features that we have built into our system that are required in the subscriber units that allow it to communicate with our system. Several of the units that I attempted to program from a, a Kenwood, a vendor, did not have all of those components in it. The individuals that I had instructed that they need to go back to their vendor and have the radio upgraded, because they know what the components are. We have a list of what was required in our system.
So your system, or what you require doesn't necessarily match up. And again, I don't know
As far as the program
But as far as like what the state puts out there, each, each Motorola and whatever company would do this may require something more than what the state is
Actually, the state has a, a set, different set of internal components in their radios. The state encrypts their, all of their radios. We are only encrypting the police radio. It's a financial decision. You couldn't so
Look, again, this is, this is what I'm saying. It's important, and, and then you said you did speak to the Back Mountain Regional.
Several times.
Yes, and so, again, I'm the middle man. It's important to be able
The list has been published several times, and then we, we talked about the list of requirements and, and approved radios that most of our quarter several locations.
Let's get his name. Go ahead. Mr. Thornton, do you have a question?
Actually, getting back into the motion to adopt the resolution as far as the inquiry committee. Attorney scheme, can you cite a part of the charter where it says we need a super majority, because I, I don't recall that ever being in the charter.
What, the administrative code?
Well, if it's an inquiry versus an investigation, it'll be two different words, too. But in the charter, it says, under, one of the powers and duties under the charter for county council, it's two oh nine V nine, says to make or cause to be made such studies on its investigations applicable to county government as it determines our best interest of the county, help the attendance of witnesses in the production of documents and other evidence deemed necessary, and to administer minister codes and issue subpoenas signed by officers of county council. Our county council shall also have the power to define and punish any contempt relating to enforcement of subpoenas consistent with laws applicable to the county. County, county classification function without a home rule charter or in the absence of such laws by state laws applicable Now, the charter doesn't state that we need seven. You're saying within the admin code? Well, I, I would think the charter still trumps the admin code in, in, in a conflict, because that's the superseding document.
Well, that's the power. You have the powers to do it, definitely.
Right, but we, I don't think we, we as council could have put in at the time that you need a super majority to, to open up an investigation in a court or an inquiry. Yeah, so the investigation versus inquiry are different words. I don't think we're really compelling them to investigate. I think they just want to inquire about more information, and so that's why I think we only need six.
But the charter was council made the administrative code approved charter.
Right, but when we did like the election inquiry, we didn't need seven to, to open up that. Any, any pass, most of the votes here are, are six, for a simple majority to open up an inquiry versus seven.
Vice Chair, go ahead. I, I've read the charter, and the only place I could find where you need a super majority to pass is, is, is to appoint the county manager. Is there other
I don't know. I was going to ask that same It used to be like the budget item that you needed a super majority as well.
Okay.
During, I think, a hot period.
And I, I also think an inquiry is different than an investigation.
Right, that's, that's We're not coming in here to, to I don't think
I don't want, I don't want to
I don't want people to think we're investigating. That was stated publicly in the past, though. It was asked for an investigation into this.
But the word
And, and piecemealing was thrown out there publicly.
There was a change order.
Yes.
If I
One of them was a cost.
If I, if I may, and I have the, the section of the administrative code in front of me. Two point oh eight A, the county council shall have the power by resolution adopted by a majority plus one of the seated members to authorize inquiries and investigations to be conducted by the entire body or even any of its committees. The, the charter sets forth the initial foundation and framework, and then the administrative code, which was adopted by council, elaborates on those powers and sets forth the practices. There is no distinction between inquiries or investigations per the charter. It doesn't say if you want an inves- investigation, it's a super majority, but if you only want an inquiry, it's this amount of votes, nor is it anywhere in the charter or administrative code giving a definition of what's an inquiry versus what is an investigation. So it requires a majority plus one of seated members, not members present, seated members, so you need a majority of, from your ten seated members.
Well, that's why I was confused, because attorney scheme, you said we needed seven votes, and I was trying to figure that out.
Yeah, well, yeah, because six, a, a majority of ten is six, a majority plus one is seven.
Yeah, but don't we have nine members present?
Nine members present.
So majority
No, 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 it's seated members. You have ten seated members. So by the other logic, if it was by who's present, technically you have a quorum at six, then you could adopt resolutions with four votes and a super majority would be five. It is seated members, so the fact that a member is not present doesn't reduce what you need.
I'll call the question.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Okay, roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Liscavich?
Yes.
Mr. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. McKinley?
Am I correct in saying this is to have a inquiry committee? The motion?
That's correct.
I vote no.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah.
Mr. Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Lovovich?
Yes.
Mr. Venus?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
No.
Yes.
That just seems odd, six to three, it fails.
Okay, all right, public comment on non-agenda items. Thank you, Mr. Rosenkrantz.
Thank you. Range question. Non-agenda?
Let me, let me go on the, on the papers first. I apologize. Mr. Dombrovsky?
My question's run the property at twelve hundred Susquehanna Ave in West Pittston. So I believe I read in the newspaper a couple of days ago, there was going to be something about that today, about the future planning on that, but I didn't see it on the agenda at all there. It is still being used, but I know the council twice rejected a lease, as far as I read in the newspaper anyway, for that property. I, you know, I'm not sure whether the price two twenty-four hundred per year was too puny or whatever, but I'm asking, is there a lease that's been signed for that property, because it is being used, and you're going to have liability problems if there isn't.
No, there was closing, and they are in the process of moving out.
No, there was closing and they are in the process of moving out.
Right. But I mean, is there, is the release though? You know, is there an insurance policy on the, I'm looking at for a real estate perspective, we're fifty six years in this. The last thing you need right now is for Mrs. Azuri. You know, terror ACL or something like that falling on the property. And now we got a two million dollar lawsuit against the county. That's what I'm looking out. We, we try to cross our Ts and dot our Is and I.
We have.
Is there insurance? So you're not listing as a rental home because you're saying there is no lease. So you're, you're listing it as an insured property. You're basically allowing them to, to enter them, you know, until such time as they move. Cause there was a dumpster in the driveway on Sunday, you know. I won't buy it on Sunday. There's three vehicles there too, so.
I think we just got a word on they're gonna be out by the end of the month.
They have to be out by four twenty nine. It's my understanding that they're already out, plus the initial agreement. There was waivers on liability. So if, as the commenter said, if somebody fell down the steps, would they sue us? No, that's not gonna happen. There's a waiver on liability.
Okay. So they have to be out by the twenty nine. And also too, you know, it's close to the river there, but does anyone know exactly how close? Cause in fact, when I was there Sunday, I measured, I, you know, walked it off. We do this all the time. You know approximately how much it is?
Yeah, I lived there all my life.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's the river, the River Common.
Right.
There's about thirty feet of Susquehanna Ave.
Yeah.
About ten feet of their sidewalk.
Right.
Front yard.
Yeah, yeah. I measured from the curb on the property to the actual river. It was a hundred and forty five feet.
Depends on how high the river is, because at different times.
No, I know. Yeah, right. Yeah. 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 It's probably about normal height right now. You're probably ten or fifteen feet or something.
Yeah. The property owner actually owns more land and less land, depending on how, how high.
Yeah. Yeah. But the question I had was because you're so close, don't the FEMA guidelines unfortunately prohibit you from, you know, once there's been a flood, like there wasn't twenty eleven, prohibit that property from being sold? I thought the FEMA guidelines initially were that they have to purchase it, you know, agree with the homeowner to purchase it, then it gets demolished. And that hasn't been done in this case.
I can speak there because I was, I was there at the time, some council. And if a homeowner, property owner accepted the FEMA, FEMA buyout offer.
Right.
FEMA would pay them. They would leave the property. Property becomes that of the borough. The borough under FEMA laws is required to demolish that property. And the borough could never build on it again, could never collect property tax on it, but is required to maintain the property.
Right.
If you did not accept the buyout offer or apply for a buyout offer, no. Homeowner doesn't, he holds the property, she holds the property, they do whatever they want with it. So here we are eleven years later after the flood event. And due to various circumstances, the county purchased that property from them. And we all own it right now as we sit here. And there's no FEMA requirement in place that we have to do anything.
You could freely sell it to anybody.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. That's pretty much the extent of it.
Mr. Griffin.
Good evening, council. Greg Griffin, People's Committee, Swarazil. Our people's committee, we made up a little pamphlet. It's, it's problems and solutions. And we have enough copies for Mr. Attorney Ski, Ms. Copino, and Mr. Robertson and all the council members. And we'll quit. Our people's committee and the mother's opioid committee, we've been addressing council for three years now on certain issues and problems. And council's been addressing them. Partway, whatnot. And council's been busy with the manager selection. So we wanted to, to bring up some problems and solutions. Just to keep council focused. The opioid epidemic, Luzerne County is third out of sixty seven Pennsylvania counties for young people dying here from drug overdoses caused by fentanyl and poly drug combinations. Over the past five years, over a thousand Luzerne County young people have died over the last five years. A community cannot sustain these losses and still remain viable. Solution, please work with the district attorney and properly utilize approximately twenty four million dollars that will soon be arriving from the opioid settlement for workable solution. The people's committee wants to work with council on this also. Road and bridge disrepair has been documented and the packet is in your possession comprised by many citizens highlighting many unsafe county roads. Solution, ARP and infrastructure funds can be used. Property tax reform, reduction of taxes for senior citizens. Solution, Mr. Robertson should be able to find waste in the current hundred fifty seven million dollar budget and also find sources of new revenue to apply to seniors' tax reduction. Our seniors should not lose their homes because the county wastes taxpayers' dollars or is not innovative enough to find new revenue sources. The people's committee has more suggestions, we'll only work with council. Lack of affordable housing, a shortage of affordable housing and rentals and mortgage homes is now reaching epidemic proportions. Our rapidly increasing working population cannot find homes for their families. Solution, the Luzerne County Housing Authority can lead the way by presenting their proposal to council for the property utilization of ARP funds along with state and federal HUD grants and by forming a partnership with private industry and possibly earth conservancy to give working families hope that Luzerne County offers a decent quality of life for their families and a, a promise of the American dream of a, a new home or at least a residence. Council members, please designate these serious problems to respective council committees for consideration and resolution. Thank you. And so Greg, I have copies for everybody. Mr. Ski too.
So Mr. Griffin, Andy Riley did reach out to me to be on a committee for affordable housing. I know that's in the process. I'm hoping that we can get that going since maybe we could address that issue. As far as someone to collect litter or, or to be on, what did you say, litter, someone from the county to be.
A litter coordinator. We, we didn't even listen to that tonight because, you know, there's a lot.
There's a lot. But that's something I would like to see if there is someone in the county that maybe you could have in charge of that. I think, did you recommend at one time, maybe the tourism, somebody from tourist?
Alan Stout, we asked that part of, possibly they helped fund a, a salary county litter coordinator. Right now, there's no one in the county employee that is designated to address the county's towns, boroughs and cities on our massive illegal dumping and trash highways. So there's no one in, on the county salary that we want, we want to hold them accountable with a nice salary and benefits and put them on the job. And, you know, any litter coordinator you hire under the county salary, the dividends would be tenfold. Increased tourism, people will wanna come.
We know like the road and bridge right now, we're short, we're shorthanded there. I almost think that maybe we tie into that. That's the only difference.
Yeah. Thank you.
We have Paul, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know his last name. He left? Okay. Mr. Raybo.
First of all, members of council, with regards to the vote on the land bank. I can't say that I'm not disappointed, but I'm not surprised either. Because, I mean, with all due respect, Mr. Vice Chair, the way you said that Hazleton City with the land bank experienced growing pains, it's a very eloquent way of saying committing violations of law is growing pains. I'm sure if any of us said that in front of a judge, that we violated a law that was just growing pains. I don't know if that would hold up in front of a judge or jury. And Mr. Binios or Mr. Skeen could elaborate or Ms. Lipsensky could elaborate to see if any judge or jury would, would actually take that as a, as a reason, as a rational reason for violations with that property that was transferred last year, the South Church Street property. I see that on the work session agenda for the, the financing, just real quick. I don't, and I said this as a board member at the meetings, that I don't believe that the county would go for a third, third party or guarantee every third party application for the loan program. That would be foolish, not only financially, but you know, that would be like any of us co-signing a loan, third party, without knowing the person to the bank. And they're saying, oh yeah, guarantee this, this loan for repairing someone's home or building their prop, building a building on their property. That makes no financial sense, literally or figuratively by backing that up. So I think what should be done was what our director said, which was recommended to lender that did not want a guarantee. That would have saved, saved you all time, us on the authority end time, and we would have proceeded with formulating this. But I understand the political optics of, of the situation. So, I mean, that's always part of the equation in everything. I know that goes on here and elsewhere in the county, but be that as it may, I hope that it's not about picking winners and losers when it comes to the LSA infrastructure program. It's open equally and fairly to all applicants and not just a chosen few who will just be given preferential treatment. I think that, that's my concern and I think that should be all of yours concerns as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Anybody else for public comment? Ms. Hartman, hold on. We're, we have a couple of members of the public that are present here that are. Nope, you're okay. Thank you. State your name.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Donald Leschko. I'm the fire chief for the city of Hazleton. I'm here this evening, I saw your agenda about the inquiry that was brought up about the P twenty five radio program. Now, I've been involved in this project, working with Fred and John and the entire county since the inception of this project. I was here when the county voted to do the borrowing. And I gotta say, as a county, you should be proud. Because this county took the step where other counties never took the step of supplying the first responders with the radios. We're getting mobile radios, we're getting portables. That is very important because that is a very big price tag. We all thought, you talked about money before, we talked about anything. That's very important. As a first responder, this council, the manager, yous all worked together to get this to happen, working with Fred to make this happen. And I can tell you, being at various meetings, training, we've already done training at the EMA building on this news radio system. Fred, the entire committee that's working at the nine one system has been very open with us, very straightforward. I can't wait for the system. I'm eagerly waiting. I wish the system went online tomorrow. Because let me tell you, if any of you have, if none of you has been out in the field, go out one night to your local firehouse. Go with your police departments, go to EMS and go work on a radio system that they have to deal with. Come to Fire South. That's down in Southern Luzerne County and get a major fire where you have one frequency to use. And you have three working fires and try to talk on one frequency. It's not easy. So as a chief, I'm looking forward to the system. And I applaud the efforts of the, the staff that Fred and his team are doing, but I also wanted to thank the council, to thank the county. Just took a major effort on to put first responders first. I know in other counties that have done this system and haven't supported their first responders. You stepped up and you did this. So any money, and, and again, I know there's, there's some questions on urban money that they're asking for. I fully support it, especially for the GPS, to be able to tell where our members are. It's so important to know in the safety of our members. So if it stays one firefighter, one police officer, one EMS worker's life, it's worth every penny you spend. And I whole, wholely encourage you to support anything you can to support the first responders. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief Leschko. Any other members of the public? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Hartman, go ahead.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, I wasn't aware somebody was addressing the podium. Elizabeth Hartman from Hanover Township. So apparently like I, I need somebody there that's a middleman because tonight I heard that word a lot. I'm just the middleman. I'm just the middleman. And we're talking a lot about the nine one one. And I've been following that for years. I'm part of the Hanover Township Crime Watch. I'm the treasurer and, you know, I pay attention to what's going on and I, I've heard about the nine one one. And I think it's a great thing that's going on. I'd like to, to find a member of council that know family courts and children and youth and the children in our county with as much vigor as we're doing right now to investigate the nine one one show. So my comments tonight, first of all, I, I need an answer. One would be, when did the Troutman and Pepper report hit the county's desk? What date was that? I'd like to know. Um, I know, you know, it came in and you guys held it. You guys had two verbal meetings about it. From reading it, it says things were turned over to law enforcement. But something that really concerned me in there and, and maybe in the files need to get looked at by another agency. Somebody with a forensic psychologist maybe on board or somebody with trauma training, like extensive trauma specialist to look at what happens to these children that are in that system abused by children and youth or family courts, either or. Monday was parental alienation day, so we were all on the side courthouse lawn there, speaking about what happens to children that are alienated from their parents. And I was surprised to hear a study that came out of Austria recently. It affects the families of those children for a hundred and fifty years. They found. That's, so how many generations back is that going? That it affects the, the child, the children's families for a hundred and fifty years. So I, I wanna know when that hit and if we can maybe get somebody with trauma training to see. Cause the effect of trauma on children are crazy. Like that report says that there was no child abuse noted, no extensive child abuse noted. If I'm, if I'm, I'm in my car, pulled over on the side of the road, so I apologize. And, and, but the attorney general's report when she was arrested said that there was child abuse. So I'm confused as well how they didn't find any and why they're not counting trauma as child abuse. Because if you look at the studies of children that are removed from their families and their extended families and the ramifications of that on the child for their lifetime, it's extensive child abuse. So parental alienation is trauma and trauma is child abuse. So if someone can get back to me, y'all have my email address, I believe. I can send it over to the LCMPP email address. On the date that that hit the county, I'd appreciate that, please.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. Any other members of the public?
Your, excuse me, your agenda item was the declaring the council position vacant. My non-event agenda item is the selection and, and placement of the replacement candidate. Mr. Schnee left this council as a Republican. He changed his registration to be a Republican. He ran for office, campaigned and was elected as a Republican to the one hundred and sixteenth legislative body. Was seated as a Republican. Clearly, at this point in time, he is a Republican. What he did in the past, he did of his own volition. The last vote he made in this tribunal was for the selection of the new county manager. And as I recall, the votes initial, initially he abstained. He abstained. As the vote came around, it was nine. One vote for Ms. Kokomo and one abstention. He then jumped in and he said, in the spirit of unanimity, I'm changing my vote to go along with the majority, the majority being the Republican members of the council who all but one voted for Mr. Robertson. So clearly, clearly, without dispute, Mr. Schnee left this council as a Republican. And I would urge you as a, as a body to go forward with your legal opinion that the charter says you will select a Republican as his replacement. a Republican as his replacement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Any other members of the public? Mr. Chomp?
Dave Chomp, West Pittston, council. We have almost a hundred million dollars in ARP money. That money can very, very easily kind of just disappear to a black hole if it's not spent wisely. One of the great infrastructure calamities, injustices of this county has been West Pittston being unguarded by a levy system. I live in West Pittston, yeah, I'm not in the flood zone, but there's eight hundred houses and businesses that are flooded every ten years or so. We should find a way to take a portion of that ARP money and build that levy once and for all. It can be done, it could be done in conjunction with the redevelopment authority and it should be done. This is something that's needed, that's tangible, that will last for generations and will be a great legacy from this council to West Pittston, one of the great, great American towns going all the way back to seventeen seventy-eight with Fort Jenkins. We should also look into firming up the levy in Duryea and the section in Exeter. This money will not come to us again. Okay, this is a gift and we should try to correct some of these longstanding, standing injustices, especially the levy system in West Pittston. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chomp. Any other members of the public for public comment? Anybody on the Zoom call? All right, hearing now, I have a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? All right, meeting is adjourned at seven fourteen. We will come back at, uh, we will reconvene at seven twenty-four.
All right.
Is that time to get a future?
Well, there's another comment session coming up.
Yeah, at the end of, uh.
Maybe they're gonna comment.
At the end of.
They didn't comment.
Who's curious?
Yeah, I don't.
Just see what's going on. I don't know.
Yeah. So, you know, I wanna, you're free. Definitely, so. All right. Okay, it's seven twenty-five. All right, seven twenty-five, I'll call the, uh, work session to order. Uh, we already did the flood, believe it's a moment of silence. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Venus?
Present.
Mr. Loscavage?
Here.
Mr. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. McGinley? Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Rayo? Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Thank you. Um, do we have any additions or deletions from the agenda? Hearing none. Agenda is adopted. Oh, oh, sorry. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion, Venus.
Second.
Thornton.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Receive and discuss budget reports for March. Andrew Kokomo.
Good evening. Good evening. Uh, this evening we will have, uh, Danielle Cunningham, uh, speak to the budget and finance, uh, report.
Go ahead, Ms. Cunningham.
Hi, um, the monthly budget reports are in your packet and if you have any questions, you can email myself or Mr. Sweat.
Thank you.
I just wanna say something.
Go ahead.
I, I've been, I've been reading through these, you know, I like looking at numbers and there's a couple little things I wanna look at. Um, I know in licensing, there's a line item forty-four sixty-two eighty, it's expense reimbursed with some page seven. Um, in twenty twenty-one, we passed a budget with zero dollars and there's currently year-to-date transactions of fourteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars. And there's also no matching budget adjustments. So I think that's an interesting point to take a look at. Also in the treasurer's office, I think it's on page eighty, line item five forty-seventy, there's a small tool to minor equipment. The zero dollars were budgeted and it was spent at two thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and ninety-two cents. Again, I don't see any approved budget transfer. So I just wanna, just make that known for the end of the year when we're writing a new budget. I think we need to be cognizant of that fact. We need to make sure that we're gonna make changes to the budget throughout the year. We should be making council aware of those changes. I mean, that one budget item, I mean, let's see, which one was it? I think it was on page seven.
Four sixty-seven.
Four sixty-twenty-eight, or no, the one on page is on eighty. I mean, that's, that's a budget, the budget's already a hundred and eleven percent and we're only in March or April. I mean, that's concerning to me. That's all that I have.
Any other comments?
I can speak to that.
Go ahead.
Uh, well, for the licensing one, we actually did try and do a budget amendment at budget time to add the revenue in there. So that's a check from the state and the amendment failed when we passed the budget last year in twenty twenty-one. And then, um, the treasurer's one, the small tools, we didn't budget it, but we needed to replace the computers for their office so they can process taxes and everything because they were running on thin clients and we just need to do a budget transfer for that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Number two, discussion regarding to ordinance amending the twenty twenty-two fiscal year budgets for Luzerne County, D and A.
Once again, Danielle Cunningham will speak to that.
Okay, um, this is just a budget adjustment. We just need to add two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars to the budget. It's, um, federal money, alcohol program received and is going to be for, for prevention programs, strategies and activities. And if there's any questions about that grant, you can contact Ryan Hogan, who is the administrator of drug and alcohol.
Any questions?
So all, all of that money she just mentioned, the two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty was from the grant?
I believe that's what she said. Ms. Cunningham, all of that money you just mentioned was from the grant?
Yes, um, the drug and al, it's going to go in the drug and alcohol fund, the nine sixty. And they are going to be utilizing that for, um, conferences and to educate the substance of youth.
Okay, thank you. Number three, discussion regarding resolution requesting a multimodal transportation fund grant from the Pennsylvania Commonwealth Financing Authority.
Uh, this is a, a grant, uh, for Ransom Road, uh, that needs to be submitted. And it really is just, uh, approving that we submit the grant, before the grant.
It's just an application to apply for a grant.
Yeah, just the application.
Okay.
All right, um, Elite Revenue for the Homeowner Assistance Program.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sam Felton and I am the solicitor, uh, with Elite Revenue for the Tax Claim Bureau.
Thank you. And Sean Shimani is here with me this evening. And the reason that we asked to be placed on the agenda is, uh, the Pennsylvania, um, Homeowners Assistance Fund recently has allocated about three hundred and fifty million dollars in the Commonwealth to be used to help families that meet certain criteria that have struggled with the COVID nineteen pandemic. As part of that, um, there is five thousand dollars of funding available to qualified families that can be used for back property taxes. The way the, uh, fund has been drafted is it's from January of two thousand and twenty forward. Okay, where we have an, an issue is we have a, a number of homeowners. Okay, where we have an issue is we have a, a number of homeowners in the county who owe property taxes prior to two thousand and twenty, as well as two thousand and twenty forward. And we're working with these individuals to either have them on payment plans. Some of them qualify for hardships. Oftentimes, though unfortunately, they, they fail to, to stay with the plan. So we want you to be aware of the fact that under six oh-three of the Pennsylvania real estate tax sale law, we must collect all taxes doing owing when we go into an agreement. Okay, so let's say I owe taxes from two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one. I qualify for this grant of five thousand dollars, which would significantly help me. They come into our office and they seek a payment plan. Okay, which is permitted under the statute under six oh-three. We put them on a payment plan, and then they go out and they, they qualify for this fund. When that money comes in pursuant to six oh-three, we have to apply any monies received to the most delinquent taxes. So we have a flag mark, right? We don't want to hurt these people who qualify and are clearly suffering. Once they're on a payment plan, they're not considered delinquent for purposes of the, the fund. But when we receive the money, under the statute, we're required to apply first to two thousand and nineteen. So what's the solution, right? I mean, we've, we have competing interests here. I can work with attorney scheme, and we could present something to the court, if you would like, that can possibly address this. We can reject the money because what I don't want to do is be accepting money that we know we shouldn't be accepting because we're out of compliance with the fund, right? We don't want to be in violation of something from the Commonwealth. So I'm, we're here because we don't know what, what to do. And considering that the, the fund really affects the citizens of the county and those who qualify, we're looking for some guidance as to what you would like to see come from the Tax Claim Bureau, understanding that there's the potential for competing interests.
You say that these, a lot of people do have a payment plan?
Yes.
Or would that, again, that could apply to people that are going to possibly be able to get the five thousand dollar grant?
Correct.
Is there any way to, that we can mention to them, pay the, you know, anything that's prior to two thousand and twenty?
The, the issue is, under section six oh-three, when they sign up for their payment plan, we have to include any and all taxes returned as of the date of the plan.
So you can't take, you can't just take one year out of that, I guess?
Not without guidance from you. I mean, we, we follow the statute strictly when it comes to this, unless they get a court order, they petition the court. We, you know, that, that's the policy that is in place because that's what the act requires.
And this three hundred and fifty million dollars comes from the state?
Yes.
And it's separate than like COVID, or is it part of COVID?
It's, it's part of COVID. It stems from federal funding. And then Governor Wolf set up this program. And, you know, they set up the rules, and I think it's from January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty forward. And it's not just limited to taxes. So there's, there's a thirty thousand dollar cap for household. You can use it for delinquent mortgage payments. You can use it for homeowners insurance and also H O A dues. We don't have too many homeowners associations in the county, so I'm not too concerned about that. But there's another layer to this as well. There is a case that stems out of Allegheny County involving a company called Vision Properties, Inc. And it was essentially a class action lawsuit whereby the Attorney General's Office sued this company because they had over six hundred and fifty properties in the Commonwealth under a rent-to-own. And under the rent-to-own contract that these people signed, they were supposed to be paying their property taxes as part of your monthly payment. Kind of like in your mortgage, if you have an escrow. Well, this company, they esconded with most of the money, and these people never got their properties. In November of two thousand and twenty-one, the county court in Allegheny County started ordering that deed to be placed in the name of the contract, the the property owner, for lack of a better word, and the tenant under the rent-to-own contract, however you want to call it. We do have at least five properties in the county which were subject to this litigation. We were contacted by the Attorney General's Office, and we did remove those properties from any tax sales because of the, the pending litigation. But these people, I'm assuming, will qualify for this funding. Their taxes go back to two thousand and fifteen or sixteen. So they really were, you know, put in a bad spot because of this. We can work with the courts, I can work with attorney scheme. I want you all to be aware of it because I'm anticipating this to become an issue. And then everyone's going to be saying, well, tax claim won't do anything. It's not that we don't want to, our hands are tied.
I think any way that we can recoup taxes, that's, you know, due to us, that's a big plus.
Absolutely. It's five thousand dollars of found money for the county if we can figure out a mechanism that works.
I would say that's a great idea to be able to.
Was this past year money from, from the executive branch? So went from the state governor, the South B A, did it work? Or did it go through the legislature?
You know what, I didn't look into.
Because I mean, like, you know, why would the legislators, if, if, if they did it in the state house or state senate, why would they, you know, have kind of a bigger statute?
Come to my office, that's where I make my money.
Yeah, what they're doing is putting us in front. If, if the directive has certain criteria that they need to correct at a state level, I don't know if we supersede anything.
And, and if that's the county's position, we will hold to it. It, it's just, we have, you know, there, this issue is out there.
I mean, I know we have a new state rep from the body, just that's what the, the first issue for him to take up. You know, of course, the, the delegation up here to take that back to Harrisburg. Put in the actual budget or change a lot, so you're, there's no.
So.
They'll put us in that.
So what? What I understand is they are taking the position, trying to navigate this. Well, if you are under a payment plan, then you're not delinquent in taxes, and you can receive the money. And I said, because I was on a conference call, and I said, okay. But if you read further in the section six oh-three, it states that we have to collect the most delinquent taxes first. That's how we have to apply every payment. So I, it hasn't been thought through as far as how this applies in, under the real estate tax sale law. I just want to know how you want us to move forward because this is, you know, there's three hundred and fifty million dollars out there, and I expect it to be.
I guess it'll be audited the same way we'll be audited with the ARC money and given out anything. Is that what it would happen? It would come back to you because you're working with the people, or are we?
Well, we, I mean, we, we are. Every payment that we receive, if you look, we, we have a detailed accounting of internally per property identification number. So if there is an audit, it would come up. And so, you know, right now, I've instructed the Tax Claim Bureau, when they're receiving the money, if anything comes in like this, hold it. Because if they owe prior, ta, any taxes due prior to two thousand and twenty, that's an issue. And then, I, I mean, I could even get more into the weeds and say, well, what if the taxes weren't returned until February or, you know, the end of January of two thousand and twenty by the local tax collector for two thousand and nineteen?
Who ultimately will be the deciding factor? Is it just that someone could litigate it? Or is the state going to come back?
The state could come back and audit and say to the county, you shouldn't have accepted these funds, and we want the money back. I would think that that's, that's potentially what could happen if we, if we don't have procedures in place and then get them approved. My thought was, whatever was decided, I would work with attorney scheme and take this to the Attorney General's Office and say, can you please offer an opinion? But right now, we have no guidance other than strictly adhering to the fund. Which if we, that's what you tell us, we'll do. No issue doing that.
Well, what would you prefer we do?
It's really not my decision. And I, I say that as far as.
Vote on it at some meeting, somebody will know, somebody.
Yeah, I mean, I look at it as it's an opportunity to help people who have really been struggling. I feel very badly for the people that were subject to the Vision Properties litigation because they were making their payments. That could be on a case-by-case basis because it aren't that, it's not that voluminous, so to speak, where they can petition the court, and we could let it go through the court system. I know of five right now. As far as for everyone else, I don't even know how many people will apply. But it's open right now as we speak, and, and I don't, I don't want to be the one saying, no, we can't do this without guidance because it's really not a tax claim decision. If I go by the letter of the law, I'll, you know, it's simply anything prior to, we, you don't qualify for us. We can't accept the money because your taxes are prior to two thousand and twenty.
Question.
Yeah.
Back, it's back up to the beginning of your discussion. Other than those five anomaly properties that you mentioned taxes due from twenty fifteen, other than those, is it three years back taxes? Will they be owing taxes for eighteen and seventeen?
So we move everything to a sale in accordance with the statute unless there's a bankruptcy filed. If they are on a payment plan and they continue to meet their obligations or court ordered green. They, I mean, we have, tomorrow I have nine hearings regarding Thursday's taxing with people trying to get on an additional payment. That becomes a decision for the judge, not a decision for us.
But there are some people that have back taxes.
Lots. Yeah.
Okay.
If we do proceed with, well, if you go to the court or the Attorney General, how long do you think it'll take? Because obviously you need litigation or not even litigation.
Well, I've been in communication with the Attorney General's Office in Allegheny County constantly through the litigation. So I think they would help push this along because they're vested in what happens with those five properties for sure. And when I, you know, we, there were about five or six of us on a conference call trying to figure this out. And we were, we were all like, you know, obviously this wasn't considered.
I think it's a great idea to be able to figure it out so we can try to help some taxpayers and also get money into account.
Would you like, would you like me to start working with attorney scheme on how to come up with a proposal for you?
We can't vote on it.
No, no, but I'm just saying, like. Okay. Open the suggestions. I just want everyone in the room to be aware that this is out there in case you get a phone call as well saying, hey, we're not.
Yeah.
We're, we're in a tough spot right now.
Could this jump right to Commonwealth court because it is a great public interest versus, you know, skip the.
I mean, as an attorney, sure, I mean, someone could, but they would have to litigate it. Commonwealth court just isn't going to hear. There would have to be a case brought, and then there would have to be the appeal. And, you know, I don't know, would they expedite it, maybe?
Well, because it is, you know, the executive branch visits, right?
But that doesn't mean they'll expedite.
Has anybody got, you know, reached out to the executive branch government?
The Attorney General's Office out in Allegheny County was working on it. But they, you know, they, they weren't able to make any real progress in or.
And the only thing that I've been counseled from a legal standpoint, we just said all taxes. Do that from a local level, and the county has a five paper vote till that matters. adjudicated, we can, we can take that and just.
Well, I, I think you would, you would have to say that we are not permitted to sell a property for anyone that qualifies under the program. I don't think I would want to be as broad as on tax sales. But you can limit it that if they, if they do qualify under the program and they receive an approval letter, then there is, they have to do an allocation of the funds. So.
And this is something that the homeowner applies for themselves?
Correct.
And then when they bring the money to tax claim, how do you know the difference? Is there a specific check that they bring?
Well, because the way it reads is that they, once they do an allocation, the funds will come directly to us from the state. Important off is administering the payments. So we, you know, we're on the lookout for that right now as we speak.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening. Sam, I'll be in touch.
All right, thank you. Take care. Next, discussion regarding ordinance authorizing and approving a project of the redevelopment authority of the county of Luzerne. The authority authorizing and directing the incurrence of lease rental debt in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed fifty-five million dollars pursuant to the Act of General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, known as the Local Government Unit Debt Act, as it reenacted, amended and supplemented the Debt Act, determining that such debt shall be incurred under the Debt Act as lease rental debt to be evidenced by a guarantee agreement of the county securing one or more series of federally taxable and/or tax exempt revenue bonds or notes, likely bonds, to be issued by the authority at the same or different times to finance a project of the authority consisting of, one, financially financing various public improvements in the county as approved by the authority, and, two, paying the cost and expenses of issuing bonds, authorizing and directing proper officers of the county, A, to prepare, certify and file the debt statement and borrowing base certificate required by section eight one one zero of the Debt Act, B, to cause to be prepared and filed statements required by section eight zero two six of the Debt Act, which are necessary to qualify all on such lease rental debt for the exclusion from the appropriate debt limits as self-liquidating debt, C, to execute, to attest, seal and to deliver a guarantee agreement on the authority and the purchaser named therein, approving the obligation of the county pursuant to such guarantee agreement, the sources of payments of such guarantee obligation, authorizing the proper officers to take all of the required, necessary, desirable related action in connection with such project, and the execution and delivery of the guarantee agreement providing for the effectiveness of this ordinance, providing for the separability of provisions of this ordinance, and providing for the appeal of all inconsistent ordinances or resolutions or part of ordinances and resolutions. No.
Good evening, members of council. I'm Andy Riley. I'm the Director of the Office of Community Development and the Redevelopment Authority. And I'm glad that you had to read that, and I didn't have to. But thank you for the time this evening to present. As many of you are aware, the Pennsylvania Race Force Development and Gaming Act, as amended, established the P A Gaming Local Share Account under the Commonwealth Financing Authority for the purpose of distributing casino revenues to support and enhance community and economic well-being in communities. For more than ten years under the program, the C F A has granted between ten to twelve million dollars annually for local projects here in Luzerne County. Under an amendment to the Commonwealth Fiscal Code enacted last year by the General Assembly, upon the issuance of debt, the County Redevelopment Authority will receive three million dollars annually for a period of twenty-five years for the purpose of funding debt service related to public infrastructure projects here in Luzerne County. To that end, the Redevelopment Authority is currently preparing an application to solicit infrastructure projects from municipal partners. The authority has retained bond counsel, attorney Brian Kostalansky from Stevens and Lee, who's here with me tonight. The authority also solicited proposals from financial institutions in order to finance this transaction. The Redevelopment Authority Board chose to enter into negotiations with Fidelity Bank to secure a lump sum for the infrastructure program. Fidelity will be partnering with F N C B on the financing, and Ryan McGowan is here representing Fidelity, and James Burke is also here representing F N C B. These gentlemen are here to explain why we're here tonight, asking for the county, the county to guarantee the financing for this program. So gentlemen, if you would like to come up and give a brief explanation to the council.
Good evening. I'm Ryan McGowan from Fidelity Bank.
Good evening. I'm Ryan McGowan from Fidelity Bank. When we first received the RFP, there were certain questions as far as from the payback structure from CFA, the state, and some things that ourselves and FNCB, you know, putting a joint pulse together, had questions from. Some of those questions still aren't fully answered, which would be if the funds were shorted and three million dollars wasn't there. What's the payback structure? Who could we work with to make sure that we would have, you know, the appropriate procedures in place to, to meet the continued debt service? We've had some discussions. I know Brian and Andy have reached out to the state to ask certain questions of, of that nature. And at this point, I don't think we've, we've received anything from, you know, comfort stand, standpoint from, from either bank that makes us feel that for the term we're looking at, which is, which is twenty-five years, that if there was a hiccup or something that would come up, where would the funds come from to, to, to cover that, to cover that debt service at this point? So, you know, with that being said, we, we felt in that proposal that we need to look to, you know, kind of secure some additional guarantees. Looking at the structure that we were looking at here with the county providing guarantee, although with it being self liquidating, you know, it, it, you know, at that point wouldn't necessarily be on the, the debt service, you know, debt limit of, of the county considering it's self liquidating. So, you know, one of those things where if we can continue to, you know, receive some information from the state, that would make us more comfortable. I think it's something we would absolutely relook at. But looking at the situation now, with some of the answers we received, it's not clear to us that if there was some type of issue within that twenty-five years, how would, you know, the banks ultimately be repaid if the three million dollars wasn't there on a yearly basis? Jim, is there anything you have to add?
No. Good evening, everybody. Jim Burke, FNCB Bank. I would just echo what Ryan said. The proposal in response to the RFP is a framework and a mechanism by which the financing could be supported from a credit support perspective for any projects that might come forward under the county's whole corporation.
We're very happy to, you know, hopefully to partner with the county and this is a, you know, a large undertaking from the infrastructure side that can allow you to, you know, really get a lot of projects done. So, you know, we appreciate the opportunity really to come in front of you. And I guess if there's any questions you have, you know, more than a lot to answer them from a proposal standpoint. I know Brian's here from, from the authority standpoint, you know, the legal ramifications and the resolution in itself, make sure you, you know, take any questions as well.
You said you did reach out to the state to get an answer on that?
Yes. Brian, you may want to-
We had, when we started the process, Brian wants to speak. There are some questions just when you look at the amendment that was passed through on the fiscal code. So in effort to clarify those, we reached out to the CFA, we had a conference call with them, we outlined our questions, we presented it to them, they took a couple of weeks to answer those. And there are issues on that legislation, things like something as simple as there's nothing in that amendment that states that it can't be changed or repealed. So an issue on the credit side is, okay, we do this deal. Next year, it's now two million or it's one million, or they just get rid of it completely? And the sole source of repayment is that three billion dollars. There's no other security for the deal. There's no other revenues of the authority that are pledged. So it creates those types of credit issues. And one of the reasons why the lenders, you know, wanted to address this with the county council to see if there's an opportunity to solidify that loan and that resource. The other big issue, and once again, it's twenty-five years. The sole source of those funds are the casino revenues in the county. Now, nobody expects there to be an issue there. But if there is something at the county or doesn't produce the revenues that they've been producing for the last couple of years, there's no other support for that shortfall. We asked the CFA, a couple of the other lenders that came in, condition, or in not reading fully through that legislation, assume that there was a state appropriation or appropriation from the CFA to cover any shortfall. There is not. We asked them that question, even though we do that answer and they answered that, that there is not any money from the Commonwealth for the CFA. It's solely that three million dollars for that amendment. So it's those credit issues that raise the concern.
And you're going to wait to proceed until you get that answer?
We've gotten those answers. They've answered those questions.
So they're not going to?
Right. I mean, there would have to be changes. They answered the questions as the legislation is right now.
And with taking the money, you want to take all that money upfront to do projects, you know, like right now you have projects in mind to do. And so you would need all that money?
Yeah, we don't have a list of projects. We would, what we would do is, and we're in the process now of developing an application. We would send that out to the municipalities, obviously the county. And then we would obviously have a due date and then review the applications, the redevelopment authority board. I know Mark is here representing the board. They would review those applications, make some recommendations, and then provide them to the Commonwealth Financing Authority for approval.
Is it for, and I said infrastructure, so is it infrastructure or is it for lightened buildings?
No, it's, it's strictly for infrastructure, maintenance of roads, bridges, those types of things.
Would be a great thing.
And one of the opportunities in working with the bank on this is as they develop projects, they have the ability, unlike a bond issue where you get all your money upfront, of doing it as a drawdown structure so that they don't, the interest costs while those projects are being done and only draw the money when they need it. So there's some flexibility in structuring and some of those things are still to be worked out, but we know the maximum exposure and the maximum money, money we have is three million dollars a year. So that will, depending on what projects come in and how it's structured, but that is as much as, you know, as much as we have to, to work with this three million.
I know from, I was on the last RA call and I know that was a pretty bad, it didn't leave again. I mean, although the RA took a vote.
Yeah, FNCB did not- I'm sorry. You're correct. PNC did not explicitly say they would require a guarantee. I think, and Brian, if you want to speak to that a little bit.
I will. They, they didn't put it in the RFP. What they put in the RFP were the same questions that we've been asking. So I believe, and I can't speak for PNC, but the answers to those questions are going to result in the same conversation with PNC as a lender because they were asking those same, they had the same concerns that Fidelity raised, Fidelity and FNCB really just put in, you know, we hope we could work around and not need the guarantee, but if we get the answers to these questions and they have the credit concerns that we do, we'll be looking for the guarantee. So I, I believe PNC would be in the same situation, but we haven't had that conversation.
I mean, so what you're telling me is that you're really not prepared to answer it against the, or do we not do?
It was not in the RFP. The questions were.
So that RFP was passed by the board at the time, but that is what would have been signed. That's what they would have been obligated to at that moment.
It was really just a proposal, commitment to lend. All of those questions are subject to credit review and final approval. So these were just, hey, we think we could help out. Here's what we think it's going to look like. The bond issue side, as I mentioned, they were just assuming that there was state appropriation or CFA appropriation and they'd get their bonds rated based upon that, which we know to be not the case. So.
So once again, the state kind of dropped the ball, then well, we verbiage in their legislation and once again, I just had this conversation of the previous, you know.
Yeah, the legislation is very vague. It's very vague.
People will tell, or not you specifically explain, the RA will back to the state legislature and have clean up their crap before they bring it to us. I mean, because we, we really can't dictate what's, what's in that legislation. We can, I kind of only follow the guidelines, but I don't, I don't think it's fair to us and the county taxpayer to put us on the hook for twenty-five years. Yeah, for up to three million dollars a year. So it's not fair to us and people down in Harrisburg who did end up.
Vice Chair, thank you. I studied this issue obviously before we came to the meeting tonight. And the way I view it is as follows, and believe me, thank you, gentlemen, for coming to the meeting tonight. This is no knock on the quite excellent institutions or the banks. But the way I read this, this was a new program authorized by the state legislators last year to fund quote unquote, large scale infrastructure projects. As was stated earlier by Mr. Riley, seventy-five million is expected to come our way in the county over twenty-five years. That's three million dollars a year. So we could sit here every year and wait for that three million. And if it comes, great. If it doesn't come, okay, we don't owe anything. But when I read this, the redevelopment authority wants to borrow fifty-five million because they want all the money of, most of it upfront. And that, their plan is to leave the other twenty million for interest payments and borrowing costs, correct? Over the terms of the lending arrangement. That's what I read. So that twenty million dollars goes out the window from the county. That goes to a financial institution. Okay, such as the ones that are here tonight. So in essence, think about that, three million a year for twenty-five years, the seventy-five million comes here. We use fifty-five million, we give twenty million to a financial institution. All right, here's my opinion. We don't need and should not borrow anything in this case. Should be no loans at all. The plan here by a redevelopment authorities take that fifty-five million of the seventy-five and hand the other twenty million over to a banking institution over the years. What if the casino revenues, casino revenues decline? What if they drop? As they have over the past several years, there's no guarantee we're going to get that three million. Most likely we will. What if the casino closes down completely nine or ten years from now? As many casinos have, I researched it today across the country. A lot of casinos have closed down and then our three million dollar gift would cease altogether down the road. Guess what happens then? Who's ever sitting here at county council, we need to raise taxes on our county residents to cover those loan payments. Because this is an additional debt. So in many ways, we see these programs and I equate it to like a kid in the candy store when I was a kid. I'd win it and buy all the candy I could with every penny in my pocket. You know why? It wasn't my money. It was my parents' money. And we seem to somehow think that this is the best way to tackle these infrastructure projects by borrowing the money upfront because we can't wait to get it every year at no interest and no cost. So we borrow it and then we put it on the backs of the taxpayers possibly if those casino revenues don't come through and we don't receive that three million a year. So I think we just take, at the end of the game, we take the entire seventy-five million from the state and spend it on our infrastructure projects. And furthermore, I think we take that three million a year and initially pave all the county roads and fix our three hundred plus bridges. You know, over four years, that's twelve million dollars. That would go a long way. If we just, and then we continue with a permanent paving project over the next twenty-five years. Because we all know how bad our road structure is in this county. I, I advocate that we don't borrow any money. My opinion, we don't need to borrow it. Stay away from risk with interest. You know, with that three million dollars coming, the banks are smart. I worked for banking institutions for thirty years, as most of you know. And they want that backing. But unfortunately, that backing comes from the taxpayers of Luzerne County. I'm not prepared to do that, but with all due respect, I mean, thank you for coming and doing your presentation.
Yeah, I would say a little bit too. I basically take the big gamble on gambling, online casinos, there are huge thing now. Twenty-five years from now, who knows if they might give out twenty more gambling licenses. They go to different counties and they bring accounts. That money's not guaranteed. Your money's guaranteed, ours isn't. Again, it's a comeback on the taxpayers' backs. And I think that's very dangerous game. And that's, that's what's going through my mind right now. Because twenty-five years is a very, very long time. I'd rather get consistent three million, three million, three million, and then nothing at all. It's like a three million, three million, three million, and then only three million, three million, three. So it's very, it's very scary proposal in my-
I, I'd just like to clarify too, because I'm sure some people are saying, well, why can't we just take the, the three million every year? Unfortunately, according to the legislation, that upon notification to the Department of Community and Economic Development of the issuance of debt, we then receive the sum of three million dollars. So unfortunately, the way the legislation is written, we have to incur debt in order to receive the payments.
We have to borrow money on the backs of the taxpayers possibly just to get the grant money. It's LSA money. Now, when I, I was with the borough as councilman for many years, we got LSA money from the casino every year. We were never required to borrow, borrow anything. We got what we got. We paid three of the worst streets in town. We did it every year. Now, did they change something since then?
What they did is they said, we made it, they made an amendment, the legislature made an amendment that said, that pot of money that you're referring to, that it's ten, eleven, twelve million dollars every year that gets distributed to all the municipalities, we're going to take the first three million dollars off the top of that and give that to the redevelopment authority for large scale infrastructure projects upon the issuance of debt every year for twenty-five years. That is the change in legislation. Yeah.
We must, we must encourage the debt.
That's how the legislation reads.
Well, my comment is, yeah, I know people are sick of hearing this, but we have a new business manager coming in sixty days. He has a master's degree in strategic planning. Maybe he can work in conjunction with you to look at far in the future. I agree with Ray that they port know them become a multimillionaire overnight. He's doing that all with no building. Right? Online gambling, guys, has a ton of money. So I, I'm personally nervous because I drove through in the cotton New York today and you know what? Go back fifteen years ago and that place was booming. You can get an apartment there with idea. I go through there today. It's, it's a ghost town. So you can never say never.
And the other thing too is like our, our debt in the county should be retired in a few short years as well, which will free up a lot of money. Twenty-six, twenty-seven million dollars annually. Very soon. So I think if we just stay the course, I think this county is going to be in a little better shape. Any other comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Discussion regarding the resolution supporting the Pennsylvania Commission for United States Semi-Quincentennial, otherwise known as the America Two Fifty Pack. I just had something from Chairwoman Regal who said that she brought up the, the resolution and if anybody has any questions, just email her and she'll get them to the next.
What, what is that?
In our two fifty pack.
Yeah, what is?
The semi quintcentennial, like our bicentennial that we had in nineteen seventy-six. It's the same thing, just for the two hundred fifty in universe, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's a very long, very long word.
It's a resolution?
Yeah, it's, it's a resolution just saying that we support it. And yeah.
Okay.
And it's, it's attached here.
Doesn't cost us any money?
No. Yeah, just papers on. If there's no further questions on that, we'll move on to the next. Discussion regarding the Luzerne County nine one one P twenty-five countywide next generation safety radio system. Oh, I apologize. Oh, I apologize. I apologize. Number seven I missed. Discussion regarding resolution supporting the twenty twenty-two priorities of the County Fisher's Association of Pennsylvania.
Anybody?
Anybody have any questions on that? No? Okay, now discussion regarding.
Back again. So as discussed earlier, I have the payment schedule here. I have the twenty-year schedule for the support maintenance spelling out the actual cost for the Motorola portion of the project. I have the treasurer's report showing the balance left in the nine one one digital upgrade project under line item two sixty-five on page one sixty-six of your agenda packet that was given in the financial reports by the county. I have some supporters here from Monksbury Township and Kingston Police Department. We also have members of Motorola, MCM Consulting Group. And we also have the resource officer and a retired trooper from Bear Creek to answer any questions or any concerns that anyone has. So with that, I don't know if you want me to go through the whole presentation again or just take questions?
Just skip the questions, I'd say.
I'm here. I have the team here. Any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
I have one sort of not related to the the matters that are being discussed, but you talk a little bit about the testing so far of the system and how that's going and, you know, what you, you know, how much improvement it's going to be versus the current system.
I know personally, I've driven around the county with a five-watt handheld portable. And not all of the nineteen sites are live yet. We we don't even have them live, and particularly in the Back Mountain. Dallas site and Harris Pond site were the only two sites live. And I was driving all the way out to Tuncanic on a five-watt portable. And it was crystal clear. So so we had excellent coverage. I was talking to someone in Bear Creek and also at Red Rock Mountain, which is at the far western, northwestern side of the county. So I mean, just preliminary testing is phenomenal coverage compared to what we have today with the analog system. I know personally, again, I tested from my basement at my house, there're eight and a half foot ceilings and a concrete block area. The guaranteed coverage is only first floor with the digital audio quality. I was transmitting crystal clear, and it didn't lose any signal in the basement of my house. So that's sub subgrade with a five-watt portable again. So preliminary testing, it's phenomenal. We just brought another site on Campbell's Ledge, just came live today, I believe, yesterday. Once the nineteen sites get up, it's gonna take care of a lot of the communications issues that that the first responders are facing every day. Again, we've been discussing this since twenty sixteen. We did a study on it, we looked at everything. And the contract was awarded to Motorola. You know, that's that's where we're at today, and we're less than five, six months from going live on a on a great system for public safety.
The testing, if I may, and you know, can attest to this, currently on the analog system, you'll not be able to speak to anyone out of the basement of the courthouse. For meetings Saturday evening. The coverage testing preliminary is.
And we brought, John has a radio, if anyone would like to see it, that's what has been issued to every police fire and EMS agency based on the formula that we came up with, and and was very clear to all the departments. They all received the letter on exactly how many mobiles and portables they were getting. Installations have have gone very well so far. We're ninety, we're a hundred percent done with the police, correct, with the mobile installs. You know, very limited complaints, if any, at this point. And and again, the the testing and the process was was open, transparent.
A question about the towers. I can't, you know, be maybe so specific about this. But weren't there a couple of towers that we thought were gonna be good and either had to be replaced or equipment? So can you explain about the problems with those? I think two towers, was it?
We had to replace four towers. And with that, with structural analysis, you can't just look at a tower and say, oh, that's fine, you know, we'll be able to put all this equipment on it. And there'll be no issues. With public safety, we are bound by certain standards. It's called loading requirements. I don't know the specific standards it is, but you know, it's it's rev, they change it so many years. Rev H, but what that states is any equipment that is on that tower, it adds loading, twisting, anyone that has any engineering background can tell you wind loading, ice loading, it's out in the elements, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. So if you have a six-foot dish versus a two-foot dish, that's a big difference in wind loading and twisting of the tower legs and and any type of loading on that tower. Prior to going live with this system, we had no idea what we were gonna put on the on the towers at the time. We were going through the RFP process. A lot of this infrastructure was in place already. We have a mountaintop tower site. We can't even find the plans for the foundation. That was put in forty-plus years ago by a previous owner. No idea what the base is made of, and it's a hollow lake tower. So with that, you have less loading on it. You can't put as many antennas or microwave dishes on it. With this project, as I presented previously, many of the microwave dishes that we had to go with are six-foot dishes now. And they are, they add much more weight to the tower, and we're using twenty-plus foot antennas for the coverage for the radio system. So you add in all that loading, and you have to do an engineering study on it. When that engineering study comes back and says that it won't pass, we have to put up a new tower or we don't have coverage in that area. So we had to invest.
Were problems with, did you fix that yet?
I'm sorry?
The one tower had footing issues.
What tower site specifically?
Tell me, it told us that weather wasn't preventing you to fix it.
Oh, yes, Campbell's Ledge is corrected and other.
Yeah, that that was the one, we just went live with that yesterday, that we had to put, again, that was a tower. If I believe I included in the in the previous presentation, you could see the difference in size of the tower. It it's a monopole tower, it's huge on its base, and it has a lot more capacity. The tower that was there was never built for a six-foot dish or even a four-foot dish for that matter. It got us through twenty years.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you how old those towers are, about twenty years old?
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, the the one at at Mountaintop, I couldn't tell you, that's forty-plus years old. Yeah.
Mountaintop Tower was originally built in the sixties.
Yeah.
We don't know the exact, the the old, the original owner of the tower estimated, looked like his grandfather back in the early and mid-sixties. So that's one we did, we had zero.
We didn't.
The rest of them are aging, close out for around twenty years.
Yeah.
Somewhere in that area.
Yeah, Campbell's Ledge. I mean, when I actually climbed up there as a kid, they never had a tower, but that was fifty years.
Yeah, it was probably the newest addition. And I would say that was added, I started in ninety-seven, and I wanna say that tower was added somewhere in like ninety, ninety-eight?
Yeah.
Ninety-nine area, in that area, where we added that Campbell's Ledge, because we took out all that fire east. We call our fire east is up in the area, the greater piston area, switched over to nine-one-one at that time, that's where we had that site for coverage, so.
Are all the towers upgraded, or do we still have some towers that have to have the equipment put on?
The only two towers that I'm aware of that need to be finished are the Evans Falls, that's a lease that was already approved. We're just, we were waiting for the structural to get, they had to add guide wires to that tower. That's not a county on, but that's a lease. They're in the process of putting the shelter in and the foundation. So that should be live, that'll cover the backside of Kunkel for Kunkel Fire and EMS out in Monroe Township where they cover and the backside of the Back Mountain Franklin Township area. And then the other site is just a minor holdup is the difference in mounting. We're going on a on a water tank in Eagle Rock Development down in Hazel Township. They're not charging us to put any equipment on the tower. It's a free lease. We just had to put the shelter there. That's all in place, but we're having a little discrepancy in in on what mount, whether a mag mount or a weld mount. And we're we're trying to go with a mag mount, so we don't have to weld to a water tank and put a diver in the tank to do an inspection and and do welding inspections. We don't wanna get into that. So there's a lot of liability if the bladder is damaged, is the tank who's responsible? So we wanna avoid that at any cost, and that was the one only change order on this project was for a mag mount on that water tank to date.
That can't be done, they can't spend more money to fix that.
No, we're not gonna have to spend more money. It's just a matter of Motorola and the engineers working together on the inspection and and all of that. A lot of that is built into the contingency on the project.
Tower conditions you were just talking about, was that discussed before or after the funding, the original funding?
That was discussed all along the process. I mean, it was no secret, we were gonna have to do tower loading studies and structural analysis. We just didn't have a magic ball.
Or did it read in high estimates or?
There was a contingency built in with the civil aspect of the every budget presentation that we did. I I think we added in a ten percent contingency on the original twenty million dollars, so.
Did we ever pay consultants on those towers prior to construction?
Yes, yes, but we had no, we had no idea what they were putting back.
These people do for a living, so I disagree with that.
Well, MCM's here, they could refute that and discuss that with you if you'd like. This is Jonathan Hanson.
Yeah, good evening, excuse me, Jonathan Hanson with MCM Consulting. We don't do structural analysis on the towers until the the vendor has decided which towers are being used. We had a list of sixteen towers that they could choose from, and Motorola selected some of those, plus added some others. Once they have selected which towers they wanna use, which will provide the coverage that's needed for the system, then we do the structural analysis on it. It's not cost effective to do the structural analysis prior. Because we're doing it on towers that we may not never use, and that's wasting money at that point. So once the structural analysis is done, after the vendor selects the towers, then we understand, then we realize what we need to do to to fix those. And the equipment, yeah, they they tell us, again, it's probably the same, whether we're doing two-foot dishes, four-foot dishes, six-foot dishes. We don't know until they design their system. So we can't go out and look at a tower that may or may not be used, and we don't know what exactly equipment's gonna go on it and say, yes, this tower will pass or it's not.
How long before we're gonna need additional real equipment for upgrading further down?
From Motorola, I I don't expect any.
What's a bigger on there or?
That's built into the twenty.
Yeah, oh, yeah, there are, there are two.
Seven or fourteen hardware and software refreshes built into that. I was saying, we need to adjust the towers again, one way to build it, add on, build a new tower.
I don't anticipate having to do that. I definitely, unless unless we do testing, which I'm not seeing anywhere near the the problems that that's anticipated even with their studies. Some of the areas, even in their own studies, that they say we might not have coverage, we have full bars on the radio when you look at it, so. Again, the the preliminary testing is very promising. I don't see us having to add tower sites or coverage to the system, and that's also built into the project and the contract as well. They're contractually bound to provide ninety-five percent coverage ninety-five percent of the time with the digital audio quality at three point four, and we're gonna heavily test that in the coming months. And wherever that fails, Motorola is literally on the hook to put in and install tower sites if they need to. They've already pledged to do that, and that's within the contract.
And this is, this system is obviously designed differently than the current system, being that it's not a patchwork of of things going on. Like 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 you had said with the Campbell's Ledge Tower Site, which was put on in the late nineties when Greater Piston decided to go up into nine-one-one system. Whereas other places throughout the county may have already been part of it, so you had to, you know, you were adding things on. Now, the whole county has nine-one-one coverage. So there's no, you know how much each, you know, each town, each municipality, what they need. There's no, there's not gonna be anything that's gonna affect the coverage of the tower sites or whatever.
Correct. The the covered studies, that's why we have to wait for leaves to come on the trees as well. Because the the digital audio quality requirements are from leaf on, because with leaves, obviously, they degrade the signal a little bit, so so we have to make sure that full foliage, any testing that we do, it's gonna be driven around the county in new simulators and basically a five-watt portable first level of a of a structure is is the easiest way to explain it. Yeah, yeah, so because, you know, an officer standing there, portable on his hip, obviously, his arm bit and arm is shielding the antenna. There's a little degraded signal there as well, so we're testing all of that. But preliminary testing, and to your point, it does not even compare with the coverage gaps right now. I mean, the analog system, we can't even compare it as far as coverage. And it got it, got us through the many years. Anybody that has public safety or law enforcement background, I I have twenty-seven years in public safety, and I'm sure a lot of you have have experience in it, so. I mean, compared to what we have today, it's it's like night and day.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Rosecrans, I I can assure you, every councilman sitting here five hundred percent behind upgrading this equipment to the state-of-the-art stuff that you're talking about, and that's never been an issue. What was an issue was the eight change orders that came along, and they're very costly change orders. And I'm just here to ask, are the official people from Motorola here tonight, are you very confident that we won't see any more change orders?
I'm not, I can't say that we might not see any changes. I can't say that of the change orders that have been out there, there's only one that has any finance attached to it. The majority of them are all zero-dollar change orders for administrative changes and things of that nature. But as far as the financial impacts throughout the last two years of the project, it's been about ten thousand dollars, some change for the mag mount, uh, mount that Director Rosecrans mentioned.
Yeah, I think.
Where, where, can I just ask, where are you getting that information? Was there a very costly?
I didn't get any of that information, I'm just saying.
They're not, they're not very costly change orders, though. I'm not trying to be adversarial or confrontational, but.
Let's let's forget the word costly. Let's forget the word costly. Maybe I should rephrase that and say we had eight change orders. When I did contracting in New York City on a big, big fifteen, twenty million dollar contract, if we had eight change orders, it would raise a lot of eyebrows.
Most of it was from COVID.
Right, but.
Enforcement order.
I mean, the change, change orders suggest, why didn't they foresee this when they did the original contract? That's what governing bodies look at at all levels. And when there's eight change orders, sometimes it raises eyebrows. That's all. So I'm just wondering, is there many more change orders anticipated down the road? Two years, three years from now, come back, council could give us another four or five million. We didn't anticipate this or this. Now we have more change orders. I I don't know how that.
I wouldn't expect that, excuse me. I have a sore throat. I had a negative COVID test today, so. Motor, the county's not gonna sign off on the system until acceptance is done, acceptance testing is done. At that point, Motorola, you know, Motorola has to be responsible for it. If it doesn't meet the acceptance testing, they have to make it, so. So I wouldn't, once it gets to that level, it's working, you know it's working.
And I can attest, John and I both, on a weekly basis, speak up for all of our change orders. What has been my stance from the beginning, that I don't wanna see a change order. And if they are, I want zero-dollar change orders, so.
If I can answer a sort of question though, if you answer your questions, we don't, I mean, every every day or every year, Motorola releases a new feature set to the radio, which is why we asked for that additional three million dollars to get the GPS on PTT and the enhanced data. They were, the one is a feature that wasn't available really at the time of the contract. It's a new feature, new product that came out that we feel is beneficial. In three years down the road, if the county gets another hundred million dollars of whatever money, and there's another set of features that are brand-new to the system that might enhance the system and benefit the public safety, it's very conceivable that I will come here and ask you for that money. I can't answer that right now, because right now, we have what we need, and then we're asking for that three million dollars of enhancement. So as far as the base project, no, I don't see another change order required to get the system in its base format out there. Additions or enhancements in the future? I don't know, I can't, that's something that's that nobody can answer it.
Right, because of technology.
Exactly, exactly, right.
But we didn't, I I don't think anybody wants to hear, oh, we we should have thought of that four years ago. Yeah, we should have done that.
Yeah, and I I agree, and I think where we're at today with the base system, it's a, it's a, it's fantastic system. Anything that we would look to do in the future would just be enhancements, to make it better for the public safety.
And that's, that's a valid point. My concern is because I I didn't read, I don't know anything about this, so I can Google it. Whether it's right, wrong, or different, I don't know.
Right.
But they're saying that in four years, this technology's gonna be over here, and there's gonna be a new one way up here. And I hope that isn't the case, since we're locked in for twenty years. Because I'll compare this, and you just use the word base. What bothers me with that is we as a county ask for a price on a Chevy Cawthog for shares in one. And somebody comes in with a bit of eighty grand, expecting something at sixty. They go to pick up the vehicle, oh, geez, you wanted an engine, that that's an upcharge. You know what I mean? You want a tire. Here, I'll complete it, now it's eighty. We should have just went with that original amount to begin with and been done. So that's where I go back to pieces. I wanna be piecemeal all the way down the road.
And that's what our Motorola is guaranteed, they they guarantee our system for the next twenty years.
Okay.
And that's why we did that maintenance agreement for the next twenty years, because twenty years, a a new system in twenty years is probably where you're at. You're gonna need a new one, that's somewhere out in the next twenty years. But Motorola is guaranteed to provide the support they need for this particular system for those twenty years. And that's why we contracted to do that. So we can't fall into that, oh, we're gonna get rid of this system in four years and you can buy a new one. No, they're they're contractually bound now for the next twenty years to support our system.
I just had a question about the the money that you were asking for was for GPS. And then over the air programming.
It's not OTAP, so over the air programming is separate, and I'll defer to the experts on this. I don't do the engineering.
There's two pieces over the air program. Over the air program is changing what we call a co-plug, and that's where the channels are lined up on the radio. Maybe we want the side button here to do something different. That's a small minor change that we can do. That's a small minor change that we can do over the air. What we're looking for is group services and enhanced data. And what that lets, allows us to do is, a lot of the fire agencies want to be able to see, when I push my radio, nine one one sees, oh, Johnny can't push the radio. So the fire chiefs want to see Johnny can't push his radio. He's the one talking right now. Currently, we don't have the ability to maintain that because every time someone makes a change to the radio, if I give my radio to Jason, we have to go reprogram all four thousand radios to put Jason's name in this radio. So the, the group services and enhanced data allow us to do that over the air. And the second piece of that is, these are, they're, they're basically handheld computers now, and it's all driven by firmware. And every six months or so Motorola comes out with a new firmware that has some features in it that are free, or if we choose to purchase a new feature, that would be included in that firmware. The group service and enhanced data allows us to do that firmware upgrade over the air also. So over the air programming is kind of like a catch twenty-two term. There's actually two components to it.
It's not, it's not the initial program.
No, no, no. Initial programming is, is done via laptop computer. And now, as we began our testing, we've begun our user group meetings, some changes have come up that the agencies want to see and how the channels are lined up. We've added a few new talk groups that they didn't have that they wanted. So now that program, I can push out just over the airs, over the air programming, because it's a simple code plug.
Alright, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Sure, go ahead.
State here now has a comment from a law enforcement officer. Captain, my name is Jeff Ball. I'm lifelong resident of Loosard County. I'm a retired sergeant in Pennsylvania State Police. Most recent things that I had in my background with the state were as commander of Titanic barracks back in twenty eleven with back to back hurricane tropical storms wiped out Hattler County's communications, landlines, cell towers. We had everything gone. And also station commander, uh, Chikshini Station. After that, I was a chief of police for Houston for four years, and now I am the school resource officer, or school police officer rather, for the Barrett Creek Charter School. And I can tell you that, I just want to thank you for supporting the radio systems as, as far as you have to this point. They put me up there at the school in twenty eighteen, and this has been my, I have a radio, communicate with the janitors and other staff people in the building. But for calling nine one one, even though I have these channels programmed in with analog, it's not happening. I have to use a cell phone. With the new system, we've already had just installed the mobile unit car so far. I can hear Wolfsburg City, P D's traffic. I'm getting, uh, I'm getting Pittston City. I'm getting Houston, where I used to work. Pretty much, I'm getting all the surrounding communities. And one of the things in my background, and if you Google my name in the words active shooter, you'll see me teaching federal, state law enforcement. It's all guns in the room when there's an emergency, okay? So I don't know who my closest back is gonna be. Why, my tip, the jurisdiction, the municipal jurisdiction where I am, closest law enforcement for me really is Wolfsburg City, Plains Township. Really, whose, whose area coverage is it? State police, used to be Wyoming, now state police Wolfsburg, where they removed the taken. So that also touches on this little red button on the radio. To have the GPS function that I press that, I'm on a three hundred and fifty eight campus. Not in the building all day. Sometimes I get a call from a teacher, hey, we're out, we have kids on a hiking trail. Something, we just saw somebody walking, which usually it turns out to be elderly residents from the area that she brought their dog for walking. No, they can't have people, they can't have, you know, their dog or anybody else on campus during school hours. But God forbid the one time I get called to go out in those woods or wherever I am, I hit this button to have GPS to know right where that person is. Or I can give you an example from when I was the station commander at Titanic. Boss does one, and I'm out there on Labor Day weekend with the troopers. We're all split up around Route Six running radar. Here comes, I'm giving a morning to the family, uh, husband and wife with their kids in the car. And here comes this motorcycle, a dirt bike, down the highway with back tires, like it's falling off. Air out to here, and the guy, he's, you can tell just by looking at him, this guy's high as a kite, turned into a pursuit. And then when he ditched his bike, and I put the police car over the bank, then it was a foot pursuit, two hundred yards from the woods, like, oh. As I watched my backup go by, because we're parked around. Bend in the road where we came off the highway, went onto the little side road, only maybe two hundred yards in, but on that bend. And they knew I was out of the car in a foot pursuit, and I was running with this guy. And I'm watching skate cars going by, lights and sirens. And having, once I had this guy in cuffs and tackled him, hey, you guys passed me. You're about a good quarter mile, you know, come back, make a left on that next dirt road. Pressing that red button, having GPS, or pressing the push to talk and having GPS completely eliminates that. And I can say from being an administrator, not only from in state police, but of, of a chief of police for local police department, having equipment down or having to meet up with county or anybody else to get service done on your equipment. Hey, bring in all the radios. Somebody's coming from county. We need to make an appointment for that. For these guys to be able to just get on air and say, hey, there's a firmware upgrade. You know, you'll need to turn off the radio for a half an hour while we, you know, do the programming remotely from here. That's, it, it's a no brainer. The, the systems, especially from what I've seen of coverage so far, have been just absolutely fantastic. I'm just hoping that we do go forward with the GPS and the, the on-air upgrade, because it's really, uh, compared to, analog radio to me has been worthless. I've been using a cell phone. And now I can actually, I can communicate with county.
Hey, that's just by two cents.
And one thing with the GPS also, I don't know if anybody's familiar or remembers, uh, was it a year or two ago? The Nanico police car was stolen? It's somewhere within the last year, two years, Nanico Police Department police car stole. We didn't know where it was for quite some time because the guy was on, on the run. With the GPS technology that we're asking for, we can reverse pull, and it'll pull the coordinates of the radio and be a little pyramid map of the nine one center, so we can follow that car around.
You wouldn't think, you just mentioned something, you wouldn't think police officers ever get their portable radio stolen. Back in the nineteen nineties, when I was stationed up in Great Ben, uh, Gibson Barracks, trooper was out at Great Ben, had a fight with someone who was off a bus from Binghamton, New York, took him into custody, and then McDonald's put him in the car. And he had to call Barracks in the days before cell phones. Payphone, left his portable radio there, and someone stole. Fortunately, we did get it back. I forget how they figured it out, but troopers somewhere down around Harrisburg, out in the far home south, I mean, anyone that had our code. But just like you said, GPS opposite uses or has this radio stolen, you have a way of locating it and getting it back as well.
And with the analog system, it's very hard for us to control security of it. So you could buy a five watt portable off eBay, go have some radio shop program all the public safety channels in. Now, we've had instances where we have people transmitting and cutting off public safety when they're trying to call in a traffic stop or deal with an issue. And it, it took us months, and it was in the, in the, um, Fire East area, where we had to triangulate and drive around, uh, trying to figure out who was doing it. Uh, we eventually caught them. But, uh, with this system, we know every radio that's on the system. It's not allowed on the system unless we authorize it. And it is specific to an officer or an agency. So when you have that serial number or that name come up that we want to see, that will be specific to that, and we won't have to worry about somebody interfering with public safety or illegally transmitting or putting god knows what kind of equipment on there.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah. I think most of us are new council members, so thank you very much for coming out and spending time explaining a lot of the stuff to us that we didn't know. I know Mr. Perry's, Mr. Perry's bored together because he's heard it ten times, right? Yes. And thank you, thank you again. Have a good night.
Uh, reports of council committees? Do you have any, you have, you have a report? Just to the A B C committee really quick. Thank you. Yep. Thank you very much. Alright. Just the A B C committee really quick. We're gonna have our next meeting on, on May ninth. Um, and we'll be doing the interviews for the, um, uh, the election board, open position among others. But that's obviously the only one I think we have that's significant. Um, so if anybody else has any wants to put in an application, please do so. I think we received three or four so far. Um, and that that meeting is the day before the council meeting. So what we're going to do is send out all of the applications on the day that we send out the agenda, just so that everyone is able to know, you know, discrepancy. Um, and, and before, uh, we obviously interviewed the candidates, I assume every single one of them is gonna pass the interview. So that's, that's all we're gonna do with that.
Legislative committee.
Well, that was Mr. She's committee. We have not met. Um, I guess we didn't talk about reconstituting that committee possibly, if somebody else wants to pick the reins. Cause I have a few myself. But, uh, yeah, we'll see what we're hoping to do.
Real estate?
Uh, I'm gonna have to have a upcoming meeting. I'll reach out to all the members to see. I have about four or five different topics that we could cover. I wanted to wait until we had some agenda items.
Strategic initiatives?
Again, we met first Wednesday this month. We talked about a bunch of things. We talked about some possible changes, budgeting procedures. Um, talked a little bit about community, the cleanup programs, cycling centers, things like that. Maybe to work with other people in the committee. I mean, can't wait for Randy to get here. Talked about some possible initiatives he might have. Um, again, our next meeting will be the first Wednesday, uh, this month, which will be, I guess, next week.
Code review?
Uh, we haven't convened yet. We're still trying to figure out a date and time to get together. Although I think one change after tonight's, you know, voting session. Probably a few others. Sharon, were you able to update the county website to reflect its proper, uh, administration? Still didn't get access from the county? Uh, Ms. Prokomo, are you on the meeting?
Yes, I am.
Can you have county IT give Ms. Lawrence access to update the administrative code? Because that code that's up there is from two iterations ago. That was rev, like, two, where I'm like rev four already.
I will.
I mean, only because even the new council members got the wrong code printed out to them when they were sworn in.
I will.
Thank you.
It's the splash page I need access to, the, when you first go onto the county website, not the county council page.
So even if attorney scheme, if people were looking at the administrative code online, that's the proper version.
Okay. Light of Property Committee?
Light of Property Committee, I believe, I am currently the only city member on that committee. We need planning redevelopment authority. I think we need a person from the public, and we also need managers. Formerly.
Riverfront Parks Committee, Kevin?
I, uh, I'm gonna stop down and visit the bureau. Actually, I might use what you do.
Uh, public comment? Mr. Rayball?
It's a long meeting, so I'll be, I'll be brief. Um, first of all, when Mr. Gordon brought up with the, uh, with regards to the, uh, funding or the LSA infrastructure, it jogged my memory. It gave me flashbacks of, uh, when I went to the state and I said, I asked them, I said about the cleanup for the Susquehanna, you know, as far as the funding goes. And they slid in the middle of the night, similarly to this, uh, something called the Stormwater Authority or for sanitary authorities to be used to collect revenue for cleaning up the Susquehanna, which now infamously is known as the rain tax. So now here we are, another instance where the state slips in something in the middle of the night and decides to carve out money that as Councilmember Thornton Muscavich and, uh, Mr. Urban said, that we all already get, and Mr. Wlovich also, all that we all get as far as the county goes, when LSA grants, that could be utilized for infrastructure anyway. So why the catch twenty-two? To borrow money from grant money that is already apportioned, set aside? And then we have to, you know, go into kind of like, you know, if, uh, if a municipality is going, uh, in, is so much over its head in debt, kind of like a sinking fund type situation, that we got to, uh, do this to just, you know, go in over our heads, you know, in terms of the county in debt for infrastructure? Now, I think what should be done is, and by the way, it seems to be the same senator who proposed the Stormwater Authority and the sanitary authority to be used to collect money for the rain tax is the same person that put it in the fiscal code about this LSA infrastructure. So I think what needs to happen is, and I'm sure because Mr. Urban was the only one out of the old council along with, I believe, Mr. Ginley also. With respect to the legislative committee having two roundtable discussions uh, with our legislators, I think that might be necessary when it comes to infrastructure. That would be, I, I would suggest that would be a very good avenue for the legislative committee to take on for a kind of come to Jesus, if you will, with the county and our state legislators when it comes to infrastructure funding. Thank you very much.
Question for you, Mr. Ray. Who's that senator? Can you say?
Johnny Decheck. He was the senator who was the environmental committee chairman when the rain, or when the stormwater authorities were formed. And he was the same one who put in the legislation to amend the fiscal code. So I think what needs to happen is, we need to, and I said this on the, in the authority meeting, that it needs to, the, the details are very scant, you know, that was put into the legislation, and we need to, uh, meaning us, the authority, as well as if with county input, of course, to ask our legislators from our delegation to kind of iron out the details, make it, you know, to where it's actually fiscally feasible and makes sense, and it's not putting us, you know, to a detriment financially down the road, I think. Because if we're gonna be used as guinea pigs, meaning the authority is gonna be used as guinea pigs in this experiment for infrastructure funding, I think what needs to happen is, they should, the state legislators or their staffs should come to us and ask us, you know, hey, what do you think? How, how this would be implemented? You know, what do you see the pitfalls or the, the snares that, that you could foresee? And then maybe, you know, it would have been a better process and, you know, we wouldn't have to just go back and forth and do the state's homework, as Mr. Urban says, you know, we should, the, the state should do it for a hundred. Instead of, uh, having the redevelopment authority act as guinea pigs, and then we have to be, you know, kind of the whipping boy, so to speak, you know, if things don't go as planned, so.
Thank you, Mr. Rayball. Anybody else for public comment? Mr. Newman?
I know you'd be disappointed if I did. The redevelopment authority issue. I read about the three million dollars, and by the way, Brian Thornton, thank you very much. I heard more from you than I did from them. Okay. And you're probably right on the money, what you're saying. But the three million dollars, my understanding, was given to each county that has a casino to hedge against a drop in revenue this year versus last year. Now, I didn't hear that from him, and I'm not sure whether you researched it, Brian, or not. Okay? That was my understanding of it. Then when they got into the, the other stuff, you know, that I knew nothing about. But here's, here's my comment on the casino issue. Our casino is tied to racing. So if the racing business goes astray, which it's not going to, our casino's gonna be fine. Now, what we have to do is promote. Now, what we have to do is promote, promote. And I think we have a tourist bureau. I don't know what they do, but I could make a lot of suggestions for them. In particular, if there's some reservations about casino revenue dropping, let's get our tourist bureau working with the casino itself to put packages together with the Wokes, Ferris, Grant and Penguins to put packages together. Come stay at our hotel here. Go see a hockey game in the baseball season. Tie it with the rail riders. Come visit our casino here. Go see a baseball game. If you're a golfer, plenty of golf courses around here. Tie a package with that. The arena, good concerts, good shows. Work with them. Get our tourist bureau doing something to promote the casino. I hear on the radio, there's an online betting company. Haven't paid too much attention, but I hear that it's sponsored by a Pennsylvania company. You know, let's get our tourist bureau doing something to get packages together, to bring people into our area. Work with the Poconos. Work with, of course, there's a casino up there. They're probably doing the same thing. Or they should be doing the same thing. Okay. So just a couple ideas, but remember, our casino is tied with racing. And as long as there's racing in Pennsylvania, we will have one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Anybody else for public comment?
Hello?
Mr. Mahalik?
Yes, that's correct, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, council, thank you for your time. My name is Rob Mahalik. I'm the Freeland Police Chief. And I apologize for coming in and seemingly.
Sir, we can, we can barely hear you.
Any better?
It sounds muffled, a little bit better, but it sounds very muffled.
I apologize. There's technology for you. However, I apologize for chiming in and seemingly echoing some of the things that my colleagues have been mentioning before with regard to the radio system. But I'd just like to be very brief in, in another important aspect of the necessity for this to potentially come to fruition as far as the GPS enablement and so forth. We discussed several things about equipment being located and being able to find a radio and a police car and so forth. My, my involvement in public service goes back to 1985, when I became a member of a local fire department. And I've been involved in fire EMS and then police ever since. In 1998, I became a member of a state agency responsible for wildland suppression. One of the first things that I was taught and that it was shared was an area Newport Township that was cordoned off by an orange construction fence. And that fence surrounded a sizable air shaft. As you know, our area is riddled with a lot of remainders of previous mining operations to include air shafts and things of that nature. We heard my colleague tell his story about his foot pursuit and, you know, him being out in the woods by himself. I was taught with regard to that air shaft, that a firefighter lost their life. And I'm going back several decades and I apologize that I can't give you the specific information from the top of my head right now. But this allegedly occurred decades ago, where a firefighter lost their life on a, on a wildland incident by falling into the air shaft. Today, we have the technology by way of these portable radios and so forth to possibly prevent that from happening. Or in the event of an unfortunate circumstance where somebody does become injured or goes missing, we can save or potentially retrieve a human life by way of enabling this GPS locating. And I would ask council to seriously consider that portion of it as they move forward in making the decision for the GPS enablement and the rest of the things that the 911 center is requesting. I don't know if everybody knows this, but I'd be willing to bet my next paycheck that almost 100% of the members of the 911 center either are themselves or are family members of people who have been involved in public services. So I trust them with the decisions that they make as far as what they're looking forward to to providing us with the best equipment possible to protect us out here in the field.
Thank you, Mr. Mahalik. Ms. Hartman?
Thank you. Elizabeth Hartman, Hanover Township. I'm going back to the Hartman and Pepper report. Not sure if all of council have had a chance to read the report. But I just want to call attention to footnote number nine that is on the report, which is on page five. And that footnote says that during the course of the investigation, some interviewees also raised concerns that Von Swan's relationship with individuals and entities that contracted with LCCYS. These issues were not addressed in part of this report, but investigators communicated them to county leadership. Investigators understand that the county controller has sent, conducted audits of two contractors and the county has reexamined these relationships. Will they be released to the public and what controller did that? Was it the previous controller or the present controller? Does anyone know?
Yes, tho- those reports are online. They're on the controller's website, actually. The one is for the Brandon House and the other one is for, uh, Vigaris was the other vendor. And it was conducted by Michelle Bednar.
Okay, Loftus and Vigaris. Okay, thank you. It sounds like Walter. Thank you. And then the other note is footnote number 17 on the report, which is, and I can go all night talking about the report. So maybe we can get something on an agenda like we had for 911 tonight to talk about that kind of stuff. But let me just get to the footnote 17, which is that the issues that were at page 12, the issues that are described in this session, section are consistent with those found by the Pennsylvania Auditor General in the 2017 report State of the Child, available act, and it gave the PA auditors link. That's 2017 guys. We're talking about this five years ago. Her stuff that was done was done in 2017. She was a caseworker for 20 years. When you look, it says on the, the last one that I'm going to mention is number 20, footnote 20, that talks about people that used to be in leadership. I'm getting down to it. People that used to be in leadership actually weren't very responsive, it sounded like, to investigators. In contrast, investigators found that some interviewees who are now former members of leadership were not open and transparent during the process. They attempted to obstruct rather than assist investigators in the review of the agency. I think those people need to be looked at and fired and lose their pension. The public needs to know so we can fight their pension. One side note, on the current county website, on the homepage now, down the bottom, there's the calendar, which I think is great. You're going to notice that on May 6th, there is a, I'm finishing up. Trauma 101, which is an overview of trauma-informed care that the county is putting on. I suggest that all council members and people listening pay attention to that series. There's trauma 101 through 107. My family has done them all, just to see what trauma does to children and so that we can help the children of this county. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Any other members of the public?
Yes, this is Claudia Glennon. I sent a letter in concerning ethical behavior of an election board member to all county council members on April 16th. I received no response. I resent it. I still received no response, so I would like to read that letter into record now. Dear Luzerne, and there were, I will say, there were attachments with the letter and obviously over the phone, I can't present those attachments, but you all should have a copy. Dear Luzerne County Council members, from the preamble to the Luzerne County Charter, quote, "This declaration asserts that those who serve a role in our county government undertake a contract of public trust, integrity, professionalism, and respect for the welfare and equality of all residents. During the March 9th Luzerne County Election Board meeting, I requested that Ms. Alyssa Fasaro resign her position with the Teddy Daniels campaign due to a significant partisan conflict of interest. Directly following, Ms. Fusaro read a letter of resignation addressed to Teddy Daniels stating that her appointment to the Board of Elections created a, quote, ethical conflict and requested her resignation be affected immediately." That was exhibit E. "As seen in the evidence presented, exhibit A, Ms. Fusaro has continually posted political advertisements beginning as early as March 11th for both the Teddy Daniels and the Doug Mastriano campaigns. These posts, excuse me. I'm sorry, music just came on in, in the house. These posts have appeared on private and public Facebook pages as the administrator for the grassroots for Teddy Daniels and for Lieutenant Governor Page, for Lieutenant Governor Page and the Butler County for Doug Mastriano pages. That's exhibit B. Furthermore, days preceding the March 23rd election board vote to keep or remove ballot drop boxes, Ms. Fusaro solicited participation by posting public and private messages, exhibit C, to her supporters requesting that they send emails to the election board opposing the use of drop boxes. These messages contain misinformation that drop boxes were illegal. The resulting, quote, "volume of emails" were used to falsely claim that the majority of the public were against the use of drop boxes, exhibit D. I believe this is in direct violation of the Accountability, Conduct and Ethics Code under Section 9 of the Luzerne County Charter. Previously, the council chose not to enforce the Ethics Commission recommendation to find Mr. Stephen Urban when they determined he had viol- he had committed violations of election integrity. I sincerely hope that this council does not repeat such an egregious error." Additionally, additionally troubling is that Councilman John Lombardo posted that the six council members voted in Ms. Fusaro not because she would be fair and impartial, but because she had an agenda and is against drop boxes. I want to believe that the Luzerne County Council will do the right thing because it is the right thing to do and immediately remove Ms. Fusaro from the election board for ethics violation pursuant to the charter and the Commonwealth of the Pennsylvania Oath of Office. This council made a grave mistake in voting to seat such a radical person who believes with no evidence. I think other people spoke for longer. I have three sentences left.
Give you a couple more seconds, but we, we do, we did all receive the email, so you're aware.
Well, you're way over right now.
That the president, that the presidential election 2020 was stolen, that our elections are critically flawed. It is essential to the democratic principles of our nation that these positions be objective appointments. Prove that you care about the election integrity as fervently as you claim. I request that this email be read into the record during public comments. It would have been nice to at least receive a response from someone on council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. Any other members of the public?
Yes. Hi, it's Alyssa Fusaro. How are you guys? Thank you very much. Thank you very much for having me. I would like to respond in to Ms., Ms. Glennon's comments. First and foremost, I am an administrator on several pages because I created them. I created the statewide team for many of the people because that's what I went to college for is public relations. So I actually am, I am actually, you know, that was a paid position, not a volunteer position with the Teddy Daniels campaign. And so therefore I did have, you know, an, an actual agenda when it came to that because I was paid for, to represent him. Second, I also have my own personal life and my own personal views. Now, thirdly, I also am, my goal for Luzerne County Board of Elections is to bring integrity back to the election process. And one of those issues, a lot of people have problems with Dominion voting machines and do believe that the 2020 election was stolen. I personally have been talking to Dominion and a gentleman by the name of Frank that works for Dominion. And I'm actually working with him to dispel those myths and to bring integrity back to the election process by dispelling a lot of the conspiracy theories that are out there right now. So I think that it is improper for anybody to judge me based on, you know, who I'm voting for personally and for, you know, judging me based on what I, what I, you know, what you think I may stand for, especially if you don't know me. If you do know me, you'd understand that right now I am currently trying to work towards integrity and faith and bringing those things back. And right now, we do not have security protocols in place for drop boxes. We do not have the current, currently, we do not have this, anything in place to make people feel warm and fuzzy about those drop boxes. Right now, anyone can go and drop four or five in without a question being asked, and that is a challenge for me. And that is why I have an issue with drop boxes currently. So I hope that in the future, I can make a difference by creating, bringing integrity back to that process. And I hope I answered that question. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Go ahead.
Kind of to respond to the allegations there too. My issue was not me against the election integrity, actually completely opposite. It was for election integrity at the time and still am. The Board of Elections is actually a very partisan group. I mean, it's set up that way. Commissioner based former government, the commissioners are the Board of Elections. All of them run for an election.
Nine nights so she can get some sleep.
Ms. Hartman, your, your mic is not muted. Please mute yourself. Thank you.
So during the election process of the county commissioner, they, they have to recuse themselves. And then there are three additional members that are chosen to be the Board of Elections in the year that they're running for public office. In our cases, we have a whole little charter. The charter delegates the ability to appoint board members by us. We're really the appointed body to choose two Democrats and two Republicans. The law states that one of them, one person must be from the minority party. In this case, it would be the Republicans at, at a state level by definition. It is very partisan at times. I don't think anybody's in violation on that board because they're not running for public office. They have their own personal opinions in, in public. They can post on Facebook all they want. When they're wearing the hat of a Board of Elections member, they are allowed to bring their issues to, to the public and, and convey them to the public. Without, you know, it's just like us. We have the ability to debate, and so today. So quite honestly, I think she's doing, Alyssa's doing a very good job. I, I have some concerns with Dropbox security myself as a council member because guidance, I think, from the Department of State was is that there were supposed to be cameras on, on each Dropbox. That footage is supposed to be kept for two years, just for, you know, right to know. And also if there's any problems in the back end review based on record keeping and the statute of limitation or protection limitation, there's two years on, on all things elections typically. So, you know, there are some issues because there were, there was a case involving a member of the public stuffing the box in a previous election. The footage should be there because it happened in our own, you know, sort of our own courthouse offices. I like to see the footage myself because I know the date and the time based on the allegations. I don't know where it's at in the investigative, investigation process with the DA. So it's one day. We need to do a follow-up on that and to see where it's going. There are some great concerns about drop boxes and the use of them. But, you know, that's for the Board of Elections to decide. They have their own voting members and they can be partisan. You know, there are other members on that board that are very partisan. They belong to other groups out there that, that are political. So you really can't call out one person when you're going to call out all the others.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. And just to sort of reiterate his point, I just want to quickly say that I was the swing vote on, on this issue with, with Ms. Fasaro. And I'll tell you what, I have been very impressed with her as of late. She definitely puts the time in, she puts the work in. And, you know, it, just like he said, it is a partisan board and that's sort of, you know, the nature of the beast. So she's Republican and, and she's allowed to have her opinion as a Republican and, you know, as long as she's doing the job and, um, you know, as long as she's doing the job and do, putting in the work, I'm, I'm fine with that. So, thank you.
One last comment. I agree with Mr. Urban and Mr. Lombardo. I applaud Alyssa Fasaro for the work she's done so far. And I want to just comment and respond to all those allegations out there on these emails. I'll, I'll reply publicly, just because someone on that board has politics that differ from yours doesn't render that person unethical or distrustful. It doesn't infringe on their integrity or anything like that. So those are opinions, but there's, there's, uh, with me, they're baseless and, uh, it goes for both sides of the aisle. Everyone's entitled to have their opinions. The Board of Elections there to ensure and certify the election results primarily. Secondarily, to security elections and make sure there's no fraud. It's okay if they have their own political views, but they need to follow the law as the laws are written. And so far, I've seen, uh, nothing but, uh, good behavior by Ms. Fasaro. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah, there's one, there's, I'm sorry, there's one more person with their hand up.
I'm sorry, I needed to unmute. I'm the person, I am the person who had witnessed a, a woman come up to the Election Bureau office and tried to put ballots in a ballot box. I'm that person. And I must say, uh, I'm, I'm a little saddened to think that, uh, the DA, I understand from a newspaper article, is, uh, is, uh, cleaning up or, uh, gonna, gonna end his, um, uh, investigation and no one has ever called me to ask me about it. And, um, and, and I'm, I'm waiting, I'm waiting for the DA to call because I was, I went down to Harrisburg and I testified on March 31st of this year in front of the Senate about what I saw. And they're very, very interested. And they, uh, we are trying, uh, through the Senate in Harrisburg to, uh, to get part of that, the, a bill that would get rid of drop boxes. And, uh, to say that it's just a rumor, it's not a rumor because I saw it myself with my own eyes and I stopped the woman. And so, uh, the election, uh, uh, board chairman said, well, there was no foul, no harm, no foul, because she didn't get to put the ballots in the box. However, she said to me that day and in front of Andrea Hill, who works there at the Election Bureau, "I don't know what you women have a problem about. I've been doing this all week." And it was a Friday. So we don't know how many ballots she'd been putting in that box all week. And as far a- as I think the law goes, they would all have been tainted. Because they mixed up ballots that she put in with, with good ballots, with normal ballots. One, one ballot, one person. And the other thing that they had to say was, well, um, they were going to write a letter to the nursing homes to say, "This was a nursing home problem." They don't know that. That's what they reported to the DA. They didn't, the DA didn't come to me and ask me anything. They went to Denise Williams, the chairperson. So for them to say that this was a, this was someone from a nursing home, they have no idea who that woman was. She could have been one of the 2,000 mules that were paid $10 for pet, for a ballot from through the vote. So, uh, I, I wish that, uh, somebody would, besides our state senate, uh, take some interest in this case because it's going to continue to happen as long as we have drop boxes and continue to put in more drop boxes, which contributes to more fraud. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
Thank you. Appreciate that, those comments.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Thank you. By the way, it's the State Senate Government Committee.